Welcome to this meeting of the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance and participation in our education proceedings, which align with the Ralph M. Brown Act for open meetings. Tune into our hybrid-style meetings online on either Zoom or YouTube, or in-person inside our boardroom. To review, public comments can be made while you are logged onto Zoom or if you're in-person. YouTube, however, is a listen-only option. If you're unable to do either of these, please visit our written public comments webpage for instructions on how to submit your written comment. One two-minute public comment per person is allowable for each item. Close session announcements.
Thank you, President No. In closed session, the Board approved a settlement agreement for educational supports and services for a special education student by a vote of four ayes and one abstention. That is all.
Thank you, Board Member John. Next item, review and approve the open session agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the open session agenda?
Move to approve.
Second, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Open session is in order here. Next item, flag salute.
This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Cadet Petty Officer Tran. And joining me today are my fellow cadets Ni, Mendoza, Chang, Lugo, Dua, Stodomingo, and Mendoza. In addition, we have our color guard team with us, led by Cadet Verdi. His rifleman are cadets Garcia and Sue. And his Navy flag is Cadet Senior Chief Petty Officer Polly Wall. And today, we will be, we are representing the Milpitas High School NJRTC. Color Guard, parade the colors.
Open march, up, air, march. Open march, up, air, march. Forward, hold, peace and march.
Please rise, remove your hats and hoods, and join us in the flag salute. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Open march. Right, march, right, take, open march.
Thank you so much, NJRTC. Next item, public comments. Scott, do we have any written public comments at this time?
Written public comments? Yeah, hold on one second. We have two written public comments. First one from Dewey Lay of Heath Street, Milpitas. Children at Russell and MHS. Second, gym for MHS is the title. "Milpitas is lacking school space and school gyms for our growing community. My kids both play sports and not having the space for it is unacceptable. I hear of kids practicing outside with no lights because there is only one gym at MHS. My junior has to travel to another school for volleyball tryouts during late hours. I was already appalled by how small and old Thomas Russell's gym was. Now I'm just disappointed overall of how many students crammed in one high school with one gym." And the second one is via Kenny Gong of Berkshire Place with a student at Weller. "What is going on with the grounds maintenance at Weller? The grass at Weller is over a foot tall. It has not been cut since October. It is a big safety issue when the kids are playing in it." Those are the two written public comments.
Thank you, Scott. Are there any other online comments?
And there are no online public comments at this time.
All right. In-person comments, we have Swati.
Hi, my name is Swati and I'm a co-president at MCEF. And we are honored to announce the opening of the 2024 MCEF scholarships. We want to especially thank you, our donors, for their generosity to support our kids. The scholarship application window opens on February 18th and it will close on April 21st. This year, there are six scholarships worth over $5,000 in total. And they are the Danny Lau Memorial Scholarship, the Lisa Chan Memorial Scholarship, the James and Julia STEM Scholarship, the Diana Orlando Scholarship, the Boulder Action Scholarship, and the Calhoun Scholarships. We are also introducing our endowed scholarship, which means that they are offered continuously compared to our regular scholarships, which will be given out until their funds are depleted. We expect that this will be the last year for the Danny Lau Memorial Scholarships as we are almost out of the funds. You can go on our website and for the more information regarding the scholarships. And if you have any questions, please email us at info@mceefoundation.org. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Next up, we have Madin Tran.
Good evening, members of the school board and members of the community of Milpitas. I'm Cadet Petty Officer Tran and I'm representing the Milpitas High School NJRTC unit. I'm here to talk about the potential termination of Master Chief Petty Officer, or Mr. James Whitney, as our naval science instructor. I would like to inform everyone that this is a mistake. Master Chief James Whitney, since arriving at our NJRTC program, has proved to do nothing but be a very invaluable asset to our unit. And I can very confidently say that our unit would be much worse off without his presence. He has inspired, led, and taught all of our cadets. And discipline, precision, skill, motivation, all of these things. And discipline, precision, skill, motivation, all of these things, mentorship. This is all, these are all things that we aim to teach in NJR OTC. And these are things that Mr. Whitney has not only taught, but has exceeded at teaching. He is, he is a great role model for all of our cadets. And I know that, I am, I am aware that our program does not have excellent numbers at the moment. However, I do, I cannot foresee a future for our program that is prosperous and successful without Master Chief James Whitney as our Naval Science Instructor. So I would like to please ask the Board, I'd like to just let the members of the community of Milpitas know that if he is terminated, that will be a very grave mistake for both our program and for aspiring leaders in Milpitas. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Isaac Garcia.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Cadet Seaman Apprentice Garcia Isaac, and I am here on behalf of my instructors as well as my fellow cadets of the Milpitas NJR OTC program. Today, I would also like to talk to you about the proposed removal of our Naval Science Instructor, Master Chief Whitney. As the class leader of our eighth-grade Echo Platoon, I can say that Master Chief Whitney's help has been the key to my successful leadership of the eighth-grade Echo Platoon. Although he has only been here for a few months, it feels like he has always been a part of this program. He dedicates time in and out of school for our program, even while simultaneously pursuing his PhD. As a key part of our unit, you, the school board, would be stripping us of a key part of our learning by going against your mission to protect the education of students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Next, I hope I pronounced this correctly, Asha Oliver.
Good evening, school board. My name is Cadet Senior Chief Petty Officer Polly Wall. I'm a second-year cadet in the NJR OTC program. Along with my fellow cadets, I would like to voice my discomfort with the removal of our Naval Science Instructor. I am currently the platoon commander of Delta Platoon, a mixed platoon with ninth and tenth graders. With Master Chief Whitney, when he first came into our program, I immediately noticed a change in the mentality and motivation of our cadets, of my cadets. It is because Master Chief Whitney has real-world experience and has become a role model and a father figure to a lot of the cadets, including myself. He exemplifies someone who a student or a child should strive to be like and has had a large impact on all of us. He often spends hours in the NJR OTC building after school, talking to cadets and helping them figure out career paths and general life skills that will help them in the future. We often hear the school board talking about how professional our cadets look. It is because we are blessed with veterans like Master Chief James Whitney that we are able to look this good. The school board is there to make sure that students are getting the best education possible. Master Chief Petty Officer James Whitney is one of those people who are down there on the campus making it happen. Thank you, school board.
Right, thank you. Next, we have Shavask Verdi.
Good evening, school board. So as like my previous cadets have said, I'm here on behalf of the Milpitas High School NJR OTC program. Main points have already been made, but a main impact that, you know, Master Chief Whitney has made to me as a person is just being an overall better human being, which I'm sure everyone strives to be, especially as the people in Milpitas strive to be. So if we removed this man sitting in that chair over there next to Lieutenant Marji Jackson, that is a grave mistake for our program. And we would obviously not like that because my previous cadets have already audited. And we need leadership, we need future leaders, we need future board members. Am I right, Mr. Norwood? Exactly. So with this program and that man sitting in that chair, I think we could get a few new board members up there in place of you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Ernesto St. Domingo.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Cadet Sto Domingo and like my previous cadet said, we are here on behalf of Master Chief James Whitney about his term, termination that could come within the next year. I am a second-year cadet and I have been able to see the changes that he has made within this program. Previously, last year, when we only had one instructor, our sole instructor, Lieutenant Marji Jackson, should be overwhelmed with paperwork from the school, the cadets, and the Navy itself. But once Mr. Whitney came, he was able to take that workload off of her. Additionally, he is another role model for cadets in this program to have because some cadets or some students don't have the role models they would have, like other students have. But he is a support model for the cadets that are in this unit. He notices problems before some cadets even notice it themselves. He asks us about our well-being, our mental health, and if we're having any struggles in our life, which is something that most teachers or some teachers don't really do. They, he actually looks out for us as students because he knows that we go through a lot of tough things and he understands that. He checks up on cadets, even though he doesn't have to, and he stays late like our, like Lieutenant Jackson does to actually check up on cadets because he actually cares about us. So it would be great to have him. It would be amazing to keep him as our instructor for however long he can stay here with us. So please, we are asking on behalf of the program, do not terminate him because it would be a great loss to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Maureen Chen.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Chen. I'm a community member, parent, and teacher in our city. While we've addressed overcrowding by adding additional pathways and campuses for our high school students, please consider addressing the overcrowding and scheduling demands of gym time for our student athletes. I'm here to advocate the building of a second gym at our high school, but to also remind the Board that our two middle schools, Russell and Rancho, have also been waiting for a new gym. Not only are gyms used for sports, but also PE classes, testing sites, student rallies, school-wide assessments, and community events. If you've attended an indoor sport game at either of our middle schools, you will see a simple dingy row of folding chairs stacked against the wall of the gym. The space is limited and it decreases the morale of school spirit. There is a growing importance of sports in our community and our limited gym facilities are not up to date or caught up with the growing number of youth involved in sports now. Moreover, the fences that are going up close off the community from using the outdoor spaces of our schools to play in. Where I once could walk with my three kids to a neighboring school to shoot hoops, I now have to drive to find places to play. If families cannot afford the resources to be a part of a club sport, we as a public school should provide those facilities for them. Please, let's elevate our sports and athletics programs by providing additional gym spaces. It would speak volumes to the numbers of coaches, athletes, teachers, students, parents, volunteers, and fans that you care about our sports programs at Russell Middle School, Rancho Middle School, and Milpitas High School. And as the young gentleman said back there, we vote for you. Please give us transparency and clear communication about the bond and what's going on. I just learned last night that we don't even have enough money and it's not clearly communicated to our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Grace Lu.
Hello, everybody. I am a parent and community manager in Milpitas. I'm also the, on the board of the Booster Club for the Milpitas High School Athletics. We raise funds to support our athletic programs. And right now, we are in desperate need of additional gym space. Our, most of our student athletes, almost a thousand of them, have to travel somewhere else to practice or they have to come in before first period and practice like way early in the morning or they have to take shifts, meaning they start practice at seven or eight o'clock at night just so that they can overlap with another existing sport. Maureen, who was just speaking here just now, her son had to practice baseball, basketball, which is an indoor sport, on the blacktop. So I don't know what kind of weather conditions there were because we're having extreme weather. And imagine if you're an athlete, you're playing an indoor sport, but you have to practice outside. So what happens to you during game day? It's not fair to the athlete. We produce league-winning teams. We have award-winning, we win CCS, we win state. And these kids are out there working really hard. And we need to have that second gym or additional gym space to be top of mind to support our athletes in the, in the high school program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Fritzi Borja. Borja, thank you.
Hello, my name is Fritzi Borja and I am a mother of a third and sixth grader at Zanker and an eighth grader at Rancho Middle School. I'm a parent involved in many organizations and committees in our school district, as you know. It's been a while since I've been at one of these board meetings in person. I usually happily follow the district's update by watching these meetings via YouTube whenever I have a chance, usually a few days after the meetings. But I am here tonight to bring to your attention the immediacy with which I would like you to treat the situation brought about by the changes in the primary grades' physical education. As I understand it, the problem is that the PE classes should be taught by a credential teacher. That is the problem statement. How is it that the result is a loss of 100 minutes per week of instruction time with my child's teacher? For the record, since this has taken place, my child has missed 500 minutes or a little over eight hours of learning time with her teacher. The longer that this situation is not rectified, more time is wasted. As prepared as I'm sure our teachers are in making these times that the kids are not with them, there is nothing that could replace the time spent with our teachers, learning, bonding, and collaborating together. I'm hoping that this change is reversed as soon as possible. This outcome is not acceptable. It has to be fixed this year with the remaining months that are left in the school year. There's a lot of time left. State tests are coming up, eye-ready tests. Each day and week that this is not changed is opportunity wasted. Please make this right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Scott, any other public comments online?
Uh, no public comment at this time. Actually, we just had a hand raised. Ricky Nguyen, we are gonna enable your audio. You'll have two minutes to speak. Please take yourself off mute and go right ahead.
Oh, okay, so, um, uh, many of the vending machines at Thomas Russell are uh, very broken and they aren't very reliable. And they aren't giving back refunds to students and teachers aren't doing much about it. So we have found a solution and how the solution might benefit our school. So we can provide our school with a, with a new vending machine and we will do many maintenances along with it. So I think this might be very helpful to our school and make the, the, the school very, uh, better. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Um, may I ask a question for President Superintendent Jordan? Uh, Fritzi mentioned a trade of 100 minutes of instructional time for PE. Is that what she said? I wasn't clear on what, I heard her talk about lost instruction time for PE.
Lieutenant Jordan?
Uh, I would, I can have this back on March 13th as a board report. This is in conjunction with the need to change how we provide primary teachers with their prep time. Previous, it was with a PE paraprofessional. We are no longer able to provide PE in that manner and so our primary grades' teachers will need to teach PE as the intermediate grades' teachers. And so the compromise has been that we have paraprofessionals who monitor the learning lab and their teachers send their groups of students to the learning lab with assignments that the, um, learning lab technician is supposed to monitor while the primary grade teacher has their prep time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, Board Member Norwood. So Superintendent Jordan also heard, um, our request to look at the master facilities, building plan, facilities master plan, I should say, now at a future board meeting. Um, in addition, could you look into, uh, the Weller, um, uh, grass situation? And, uh, as far as the staffing of NJR OTC at a future board meeting, um, just the, the update on, uh, the district staff, staffing.
I, yes, President No. The Community Bond Oversight Committee will, I can ask them to come back to the board to provide another update to the board on the bond program and our expenditures thus far. So that would be under their purview. And then, um, the grass, we will definitely take a look at that and, um, address it. And then the third thing, actually, the NJR OTC is on tonight's agenda amongst some other recommendations by staff for potential reductions as we are looking at cost management to achieve $2.1 million savings in the general fund.
Great. Thank you. So, Lieutenant Jordan. Moving on, item 11?
Is, is there, um, one of the public comments was that our information about our bonds and those types of things isn't available? Is it, is that information available somewhere that you can inform, um, our, our audience as well as the folks that are on, watching online? Where they could see the updates?
Sure. It is on the, uh, on our website underneath the bond. And if you click on the bond, you can see the minutes and agendas of the Community Bond Oversight Committee as well as expenditures and budgets. Everything is detailed there.
Thank you.
Great. Moving on, item 11, MUSD strategic goals. And we can start at the, the end of the dius there with our student board reps.
Build a culture of we that engages parents, staff, and community partners in supporting student success.
Improve communication systems for a better outreach to parents, students, and staff.
Develop educational pathways that allow students to apply their passion and learning for their future careers.
Focus service and support systems to ensure that our students are engaged in their learning and are making social, emotional, and academic gains.
Identify creative, student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment, enrollment growth, and ensure healthy learning environments.
Great, thank you. Next item, item 12, Superintendent's report. Recognition.
This is the best part. We have a number of recommend, uh, recognitions tonight ranging from student work all the way through our community. So I would like to So I would like to first recognize our first grade student from Senate Elementary School, Rod Arhan. Rod is a young writer who has been recognized nationally and his spooky story is published for All-DC. And we will definitely get a copy of that so that we can share it with the board. And I'd like to invite Rod uh up along with his family to be at with the give me a five. Rod? Would you like to tell us about your story? What was, yep. Could you tell us what um the main character is? You wanna whisper to me?
Or you can say, what inspired your story? A lot of people here.
All right, well, thank you, Rod. Next, I'd like to uh first thank teacher uh from Russell Middle School, Ms. Stephanie Woodhams, who uh entered Russell as a point for the president's volunteer awards. And so not only do we have the board recognition of presidential volunteer awards, we also have Russell. And our very first student to be recognized is Vish Donraj. And he has supported our community and is earning the bronze medal for the president's volunteer award. If I could have Vish and also um Ms. Woodhams come up as well as Principal Mia, uh that would be wonderful. Thank you, Vishva. And Vishva, could you tell us what inspired you to go after the president's volunteer award?
So during sixth grade and fourth grade, lots of my teachers motivated me to do community service. And it, at first, it started out just to be for fun. But when I learned that I could get awards for doing this, I thought it would be a good idea that I could help teachers such as Ms. Beyonce from Palmroyd and Mick Scovara from Palmroyd, who are my previous teachers, I could help them and gain um hours that I could use to get an award. And also that I could show that, show how that I appreciate them by doing work for them and completing different tasks that they wanted me to do. This way, I could help the community and make sure that all students could have ex- extra help from their teacher.
Wonderful, thank you. And we have your family come up and join us for a picture as well. And you have to do over a hundred and fifty hours in order to qualify. Do you recall exactly how many hours you've done thus far?
Right now, I have done fifty hours so far. I have done twenty-five from the last school year and over the summer I've accumulated another twenty-five.
Very good, thank you. At our last board meeting, we were able to recognize Coach Johannes and some of his track stars. But two were not here. And tonight, we would like to recognize Jordan Alt House and Arnav Agarwal. Jordan came in fifth and Arnav, as a freshman, has broken many records already. So we look forward to their continued success. Family, please come line up. Thank you very much. Okay, the next set are all connected with the annual Knights of Columbus um car wash and fundraising that they do on behalf of our students who require special services. And this time, I would like to first start with our student who did a great deal of work on this effort. And that is Evan Liu, an eleventh grader at Melopitas High School.
Wow.
Thank you. And Mrs. Liu, would you like to come up? And Evan, can you tell us, did you make all of these?
Oh, yeah, a lot of them.
And then what do you do with them?
I guess give it out, sell it.
Okay, thank you very much for your efforts and don't go away, stay here. And we have Mr. Guan Alice Santosa, one of our Knights of Columbus longtime leaders and former board member, sharing with us how it looked initially before you did all this great work. Sounds pretty amazing.
Yeah, that's some material, yeah.
And next, I would like to invite up uh from our Knights of Columbus, stay here Evan. From our Knights of Columbus, uh Juan Alice Santosa, as well as our um Ocean Supermarket, Ms. Lana Quatch, and family, and also our other Knights of Columbus leaders. We have Mr. um Malabo III, who is the Grand Knight, Mr. Alice Santosa, the trustee and chairman, and Mr. Guillermo Uribe, trustee, all from the Knights of Columbus at St. Elizabeth's. If we could have you all come up and then uh we'll take a picture and then you can present the check and somebody can share a few words. Wonderful, and uh Mr. Santa Rosa, who will be speaking about the project?
Okay, I can, I can speak, yeah. All right, thank you. Uh glad to be back here again. Um uh good evening, uh Superintendent Chair Jordan, uh board members, uh MUSD staff, ladies and gentlemen. Today, uh we have a check in the amount of six thousand six hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-seven cents, which I'm gonna present to
Executive Director.
Executive Director, okay. All right, here, here it is, and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for doing a lot of good work, you know, for our students.
Be able to do that work.
You're welcome, yeah. Okay, so uh we, the Knights of Columbus, we would like to express our gratitude for the generosity and support of our members and donors, families and friends, Father Andy Lee God and Father Jung Yen and St. Elizabeth Parish Community, Melopitas Unified School District Board Members, Superintendent and staff, teachers, students, volunteers, and parents. Thanks to Ocean Supermarket for consistent and strong support year after year. We have been very successful because we, we all work together. This time, we also would like to recognize uh one of the students, Evan Liu. Evan, as you can see, your work uh resulted in such great amount of donations uh for the special program. Thank you very much and uh I do, I have something, you know, for you too. Oops. Sorry. Okay. Certificate of Appreciation. Uh this certificate is awarded to Evan Liu as an expression of grateful appreciation for your outstanding community service in the twenty twenty-third campaign supporting people with intellectual disability, the Knights of Columbus, St. Elizabeth Council eighty-seven forty-seven. Next one is a certificate of appreciation for Ocean Supermarket. And uh I would like to invite Min Qua representing Ocean Supermarket. Thank you for your support. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. We greatly appreciate the teamwork between the Knights, between Mr. and Mrs. Quatch and now Evan and uh the Ocean Supermarket. Thank you. Oh. Evan, how long does it take you to make one of those? Oh, wow, that's amazing. All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, next. Next, we have our lion dancers here to celebrate the Lunar New Year with us. And these lion dancers are students from Melopitas High School. Thank you. Oh, that's awesome. Thank you very much. That was fantastic. I'd like to share our State of the District Board Report. Our focus, as always, is on attendance and other things that are happening. And I would like to really highlight our strategic goal number one. Build a culture of "we," which, as we know, over the last eight years, that it's really come to be, I think, known by most people that building a culture of "we" is about inclusion, about honoring our cultural experiences, about assuring that our learners experience the histories of one another and that they all feel like who they are is somebody who belongs in our community. Another aspect of building a culture of "we" is that voices are all valued, whether we agree or disagree. We know that we are at the table continuing to work through challenges, which become opportunities for us as a community to grow even stronger together. So I greatly appreciate that here in Milpitas Unified, that people feel that sense of opportunity where we can come together and look at issues and figure out how to resolve them together. So thank you. This picture tonight illustrates an example at Senate Elementary School where we have three to four teachers at any given point in time who are working across grade level on project-based learning. This is an example of their latest project. They're questioned for the two sixth grades and one fourth grade were how do we provide information to our community in a way that becomes a public service announcement? And most of the student groups focused on some aspect of climate or environment and also rights, such as animal rights, which is what this group is pointing out in this picture. Moving on to our goal of increasing our average daily attendance to 97%, which is where it was before COVID. I always include a picture of something that represents how each of our schools has really focused on making this a collective goal by all involved, parents, students, team members. And here at Zinker, I thought this was great. Every day, as parents are pulling in for drop-off, they get to see how they did the day before as far as attendance. This is an opportunity for us to take a look since the last board meeting at where each of our schools is with their average daily attendance. And we'll point out that the last marking, we had more of our schools who were closer to the 97%. So I'm curious about, and we'll look into why we took a slight dive. I suspect that it could be that we are catching up with some of the winter viruses that are around. So just a reminder of health and well-being and looking out for ourselves and making sure that we're getting the rest and vitamins and water and exercise that we need. And also really being grateful for those when they start to feel that something's coming on and take precautions and wear a mask. So thank you to those of you who are doing that. Last week, we had our groundbreaking ceremony for the Milpitas High School Performing Arts Center. And I wanted to take this opportunity to just give a quick overview of our Milpitas High School 2018 bond projects. And you can see in this picture, we have several of our students as well as a few of our staff members who have something to do either with facilities or with actual bond development. And I've listed here the approximate costs of each of these bond projects. The Performing Arts Center is approximately $56 million. Safety and security includes everything from assuring that we have smooth pavement to prevent falls, that we have our grass in check so that we don't have people tripping in tall grass. And we'll definitely make sure we take care of that issue over at Weller. And also, things like assuring that our HVAC system is in great working order and that we have addressed any areas where there might be leaks. And that, so far, is approximately $3 million that we have spent. And then we have, because in 2018, one of the biggest things that our community asked for and wanted was for us to address the large number of students at Milpitas High School, which is a little over 3,000, and the consequential traffic jams that occur sometimes along Esquilla, as well as during lunchtime. And you could see that if you look at the Milpitas High School Extension Program and what that program will occupy at the MUSD Innovation Campus, which is approximately 2/3 of the campus, thus far, it's approximately $70 million. And with bond projects, we always want to put in everything possible in our bond measures that we might spend the funds on. And in this case, it included spending, funding on a second gym as well as a fitness center for Milpitas High School. And due to COVID costs, which increased supplies and materials and also labor, for example, at one point in 2021, the cost of steel went up 3,000%. And it has come down since then, but it's still not to pre-COVID costs that we had expected. And so this means we need to reprioritize some of what we had hoped to accomplish. So that's why where you see Milpitas Second High School Gym and Milpitas High School Fitness Center, we have what the estimated cost is from our architect today. And I know that later in her report, CBO Zhang is going to give an update of our meeting with Athletic Boosters Club that we had last night. And finally, I'd like to share some Happy Lunar New Year activities at Rose School. They had their tiger and dragon dance parade where every learner was involved, as well as staff members. And we also had Happy Valentine's Day projects going on throughout the district, including at Spangler, where you see some of our learners working with a parent on preparing Valentines. And it's really these types of community events that, again, they reach out to our strategic goal number one, building a culture of "we." And then also our current goal of increasing our ADA, assuring that our students have different avenues to feel engaged and participate in what's happening at school, so they're excited about being there and they are at school present. And speaking of school, we know that here at Randall World Languages School, we have a real gem of an opportunity for learners who are interested in pursuing a pathway of not just learning one other language in addition to their native language, but a second language. So we have our first group of students who began here learning Spanish as dual immersion students. They are now in seventh grade. And this year, we added Mandarin. And so our board support and communication specialist, Mr. Scott Forstner, worked with the team here at Rose to present this production of recruiting video so that our community knows that Mandarin is now an opportunity for learners if they send their students to this world languages school. Mr. Forstner.
Yep, we were going to, we had the privilege of sitting in on some of the Mandarin classes here at Randall World Languages School, and we put together this video.
Hola, ni hao. Hello. My name is Min No, your board president of Milpitas Unified School District, and we're here at Randall World Languages School. We're introducing a brand-new heritage language, Mandarin, to already Spanish and English. It's important for our students to really learn the different languages because they can converse and connect with a multitude of cultures. We really reached out to the community to see what third language we wanted to institute, and it was resounding as far as Mandarin.
The immersion program here in Randall is a great program. Starts introducing kids Spanish and English. And also, right now, we're starting to introduce the third language, which is Mandarin here. I think language is the process of practicing every day. So as the time accumulates, I think the kids will just pick up gradually and then they will be able to use Mandarin to at least communicate in the very basic daily conversations.
I use a lot of techniques, like singing a song together, or we use a lot of pop quiz to, like, let them try to use that to answer my question based on their daily life.
We start from teaching body parts, like head, shoulders, knees, and toes, and then eyes and nose and ears and mouth. And also, we teach kids about numbers. So we introduce one, two, three, four, five.
Very hands-on. It's almost like a play-based learning. It's not like they're sitting down doing a worksheet. It's all songs, it's games, it's learning by doing. So I feel like that really has helped the information stick to them.
Very impressed with her progress. She's singing a lot of songs in Mandarin. Kids learn so fast and so much, especially at a younger age. They really learn it in depth and think it's great to know these languages because you really know a culture and a different set of people by learning their language and their culture. I'm learning as well. I do not speak Mandarin, and so it's great that I'm learning a different language.
A big population of Mandarin-speaking people here in Milpitas. So for other people that don't speak Mandarin, I think it's a great chance for them to learn Mandarin and then to get to know the Mandarin culture.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Jordan. That was a self-serene to say great video, since I'm in it, but it truly is a good video to really get a message out to the community.
Well, thank you, but the thanks goes to Mr. Forstner and the team. And I will just point out that on Zoom, for some reason, there's a little bit of a lag, but the quality is definitely much better than that. And when we send it out to people, you'll see. And next, that brings us to the next item on the agenda.
Item 13, Superintendent's Executive Cabinet's report.
Thank you. I would like to start with our principal's report. And we have our principal, Ms. Nancy Pass, our assistant principal, Ms. Ryan Starks, and our instructional coach, whose name I am suddenly blanking on, as well as our TK superstar Wendy Lundin and our instructional coach, it's going to come to me.
Jenny Katson. Jenny Katson.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, Jenny. I don't know why I lost it. I mean, you've only been here for like six years, but thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, Superintendent Jordan, Executive Cabinet. Happy to be here. So before the pandemic, we had already started working on our student social emotional and how to address all of that. We really embraced as a school the positive behavior interventions and supports, the PBIS framework, to roll out our school-wide expectations, our how-to-teach-around-school, realigned our behavioral programs, discipline systems, more towards restorative practices. As we've been doing that, that brought us last year. Ms. Katson and Ms. Lundin, actually, that's where we got last year. We presented the PBIS Gold Certification that we got last year. With the pandemic, we'd also seen the need for more social emotional learning for our students, struggling self-regulation skills, how to problem-solve with themselves, with each other, and all, and in all different situations. And so towards the end of last year, as we were struggling with students really adjusting to being back in groups and behaviors and discipline because of the difficulty of that adjustment, we really looked for tools to teach our students those self-regulation and problem-solving skills. We were very fortunate because Ms. Starks had some experience in another place and that she brought some tools and brought them and recalibrated them for our community and our students and our needs, and rebranded them as the Tiger Tools. And you actually have your own set of Tiger Tools. That's what that little garbage can in front of each of you is. That is your Tiger Tool Kit for yourself, so you have your own toolkit, and including a lanyard that explains all of those and has the tools on it. We have a video that goes with that, but I'll let Ms. Starks do an introduction to the video because she really is the brainchild for it, but it really has made a difference. And within the video, it actually even talks about the difference it's made on our campus as we really work towards building skills for our students that will carry them through their entire lives. as we really work towards building skills for our students, um, that will carry them through their entire lives. And that's really our focus is really, how do we, as an elementary school, where now we have four-year-olds, um, and really building that foundation from preschool so that they are set and have tools that are gonna carry them through life? Um, so I'll let Ms. Starks go.
All right. Hi, good evening, everyone. So in front of you, I'm sure you got to your seats and you were like, why do I have a trash can? Well, now you're gonna find out. So this is actually one of the tools. And all of our teachers are equipped with a toolbox similar to this because we want students to have representations of these tools that we're talking about. So if you look inside of your little tool bags, you have got all of the tools and we even gave you a bookmark with our 12 Tiger Tools on it. You also have a bookmark with our listening tool with all of, because Rose Tigers listen with their ears, eyes, hearts, and minds. And then you have a representation of all of our tools, including a keychain. Sorry, I didn't give you the earrings that I'm wearing tonight. They're very heavy and you can actually use the breathing tool that's on my, oh, they're so heavy breathing. They're so heavy. I had to take them off earlier. Um, so you actually have all of the tools. So, instead of me explaining in this video that you're about to watch, I actually had our students explain. So all the voices you're going to hear in the video are students. You have a lanyard, which is something that every single staff member wears so that we need to teach in the moment. We just look at our lanyards and we go, oh, my gosh, it looks like right now we probably need to use our breathing tool. So our breathing tool means that we calm ourselves and we check in. So let's do that right now. So all of our teachers have been trained, all of our students have experienced the lessons. So I created a lesson for every single tool. Those lessons also have embedded within them visuals to support our English learners, but also students who just need extra support. And every lesson has activities within it that are scaffolded so that every student can access those activities. So, um, these lessons have been rolled out in every single classroom. We started with the top four that we needed last year and then we rolled everything else out this year. And they've all been rolled out in community circles. So it really has been a successful rollout so far. If you ask any of our kids, like, what's your favorite tool? They can all tell you. So I invite you to come by, bring your, bring, bring your lanyard with you, okay? Um, but learn from our video today. Um, we've got some really cute kids who were able to explain some things to you. And I hope that you enjoy learning about the tools this evening as well. All right. And Scott, you ready to roll it? Here we go.
Good evening. My name's Maggie from Rose School. My friends and I are gonna show you the 12 Tiger Tools.
Before we can show you the cool stuff, like how to use the tools, we have to tell you some of the information, like, what are they? Are they really toolboxes like mechanics use? Who can use them?
The 12 Tiger Tools are brain and body tools we can use for the rest of our lives, not actual tools like a hammer. They're made of TK 6th grade and they give our teachers and families common words they can use at home and school.
Every staff member wears a lanyard that has the 12 tools on it to help remind us if we need to use a tool. Sometimes I forget to use my breathing tool and it has been very helpful to have them show me. Teachers also have been training in how to teach the tools and we can do the lessons in the community circles.
Every lesson talks about the tool and has us practice, we can write or draw, which is really nice because sometimes writing is tough. The lessons also include a lot of pictures and sentences frames to help us along with some really good books.
Here are the 12 tools. Breathing, quiet, safe place. Listening, empathy. Personal space. Using our words. Garbage can. Taking time. Please and thank you. Apology and forgiveness. Patience and courage.
The ones we use the most are the breathing, personal space, garbage can, and taking time tools. We'll show you those in a minute. You can use those tools by themselves or you could use them together depending on the situation.
We made sure everyone knew about the tools and have even hosted two family nights so far to help teach our families the first eight tools from the toolbox.
Since we've started using the tools, our long gone community circles, we've seen a big change in our PBS World data. Check out the increase from last year to this year.
When kids are happy, we wanna go to school. You can see the inner attendance data from last year to this year. We've had an increase of 1.2% of students attending school.
Now for the fun part, let's learn a few tools from some of our Tigers.
Somebody be mean to me. I use my garbage tool. Let it go, let it go.
Here's my favorite breathing tool. Measuring tape.
We use a hula hoop to represent the personal space tool.
Is this good?
Yeah.
What about Nick?
Too close.
Okay.
Use your words to tell people that they're too close.
I use the taking time tool to sit in a calm corner when I need a break.
Thank you for learning when us, the 12 Tiger Rules. Come visit us to learn more.
Thank you for sharing with our students. They really enjoyed making this video for you. And I just wanted to share, we, we've hosted two family nights so far, which I think had been my favorite part of rolling this out. Our last one had almost 85 people attend it. We ran out of space in the Learning Center. We had to pull in extra chairs. I had to make extra kits on the fly because every family goes home with a kit. So we're really excited about hosting our final one where we teach our families the last four tools. It's just been this incredible boon to our school so far and we really are seeing a difference. So we wanted to share it with you and hopefully you will be able to come visit soon and see it in action.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to, um, I just, you've done such a brilliant job integrating circles and PBS and SEL together. And, uh, Ryan and Nancy have been incredibly generous in sharing all of the work and what they've done with all of their peers. Uh, you know them and asked for that video too. That was brilliant. And I love that the kids were talking about the data too there. That, that was just really well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rose Tiger Superstars. And next I'd like to start with our interim Assistant Superintendent of HR, Mr. Damian James.
Off guard. Good evening, everyone. Um, I just wanted to mention, I had the opportunity, me personally, to participate in the Black History Program at the Community Center on February 1st. It was fantastic. And I also had the opportunity to, um, attend Burnett's, Burn, annual Burnett Great Shoe Giveaway. And I'm happy that Dr. Azrat and her team invited me there. Different things, um, but it was nice to get away from the HR office and engage in other parts of our community. As far as HR is concerned, we're currently working with our staff leaders on staffing for next school year. Um, this is a very critical portion of the job that we do because we're working with, um, all of the needs and the wants while staying within the budget of the school district. And I'm happy to say that we have partnered with the Santa Clara Insurance Group, um, to offer two sessions of biometric screening in early March for at least 100 of our employees. And so that's an opportunity for them to have, um, you know, the cholesterol and other things checked. And we, through the, um, support of the Business Department on the payroll side, I believe, we have, um, different rewards that we, um, can participate in as employees. And you can earn, um, a gift card if you do certain activities. One of those is participating in a biometric screening. Well, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And next, Executive Director of Learning and Innovation, Priti Jari.
Good evening. Um, I have some exciting news this afternoon, or evening. Um, we, our Milpitas Unified School District has been identified as one of two districts nationwide to watch due to our strong student academic gains with air tutors i- in the afternoon space. This is a result of intense collaboration between our teachers, our site administrators, tutors, right, right at school partners, and our intervention services. So a huge thank you to everyone involved in making that targeted tutoring time really meaningful for our students. And a huge congratulations to our students who've done the hard work to make those academic gains. Um, and then at the secondary level, the innovation campus planning is continuing for the August 24 launch. Later this week, we're engaging, uh, our industry partners for feedback as well as hosting a parent event, in-person parent event. Um, the student application is, portal is open. We're already getting a wonderful response. And if you are interested, please visit the MHS webpage and the application is readily available at the top of the school website. Thank you.
Thank you. And our Executive Director of Inclusive Services for All Learners, Mary D. Durpings.
Good evening. Uh, I wanted to also share some information about some parent events. Our Milpitas Inclusive PTA, uh, Board has been working to create, uh, Parent Information, uh, Series of Topics. We held our, uh, Morning Coffee, which was a, uh, Dialogue with Parents with Students with Disabilities. We've also hosted the Inclusive, uh, Inclusion Parent Education Night back in January. And we're looking ahead for additional student events and parent education series. We've been collaborating with Renee Lorenson from the city of Milpitas and I'm really proud to say that we are going to, um, do a joint egg hunt on March 25th over at the, let me make sure I say the park right, Delano Manong, Manong, Manongs Park. And this park was selected because it's a very inclusive park that allows for, uh, different abilities to participate. It has like a quiet area for those who might be overstimulated. And we're looking forward to sending out information and learning about how we can support all of our learners and our students in our district, uh, to be able to participate in this inclusive event. And that concludes our Learning and Development Report this evening.
Thank you. And our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Wendy Zhang.
Good evening. Uh, last night Superintendent Jordan and I attended the Milpitas High School Athletic Boosters Virtual Meeting. Staff and the parents shared their reasons why we need a second gym. During the meeting, we shared with the club members that we originally bid out the project, the theater, the gym, and the fitness center as one project. Unfortunately, the construction cost exceeded our budget. So we had to divide the project into three. Since our 2012 bond work focused on athletics at the high school, we're now prioritizing the Performance Arts Center. The current gym budget is about 6 million and we need around 10 to 15 million to build it. We discussed a few fundraising strategies, including the potential for capital campaigns. The club members seemed interested in learning about it. So overall, I found the meeting to be productive. It provided a platform for us to engage with our community and collectively explore ideas to pursue for solution. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. And that concludes the Executive Cabinet Reports.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Executive Cabinet. Next, uh, we have our student board representatives. Um, this part is where we introduce our student board reps. And student board reps report on their schools and student activities. Report's limited to 90 seconds each. Okay, uh, today we'll start with our, uh, Calaveras Hills High School Student Board Rep, Ariana Rucha.
Good evening, everyone. Um, we are building a community of "we" with our Spirit Week this week that focuses on love and friendships. We incorporated Lunar New Year and Black History Month along with fun activities such as scavenger hunts and ways to earn advisory points. The winning advisory team wins a Sunday party next Friday after break. And Lions Club is fundraising with candy grams throughout our Spirit Week. Our basketball team is currently undefeated and we have a home game, um, tomorrow with Foothill High School. And Aloney came and presented last week at our school to give us a better outlook for our future. And today we had an Aloney field trip that most seniors and juniors went on. Thank you.
Thank you. And moving right along, our Milpitas Middle College High School Student Board Rep, Janice Aradura.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, Middle College just hosted a virtual, virtual information session about the school early this evening. And there will be another one in person on Tuesday, the 27th at 6:00 PM at the SJCC Extension Campus. There will also be a presentation tomorrow at MHS during lunch to discuss the opportunities available at Middle College. And for those who are interested, the application is open until March 31st. And we're currently in the process of interviewing students for the upcoming academic year. On a more academic note, our Computer Testing and Progress Gaming Club is actively engaged in coding and building a Stickman vs. game, while our Computer Science Club is in progress of revamping our school website, enhancing the digital presence of our school. And lastly, in the spirit of community and celebration, we have planned a Lunar New Year celebration for tomorrow in collaboration with San Jose City College at the Extension Campus. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And our, uh, Milpitas High School Student Board Reps, Abika Air, go right ahead.
Good evening. Um, our voters registration campaign is set to start on February 26th. We'll be conducting presentations across junior and senior English classes in the theater. We're also currently registering, registering seniors who are 18 for the primaries. So you, for the primaries on March 5th, um, you can register by February 20th and still vote. Um, the Chinese Club is hosting their annual lunar show on February 17th. We'll be featuring cultural dances like the lion dance and more, um. Doors open at 6:00. Um, the Nutrition Service Department is starting their share bins program. Um, so this is usually at the elementary and middle schools, but now, um, it's being scaled up to the high school where people can take, uh, extra food that other people had thrown away from the share bins. And we're working on a collection program with local charitable organizations like Hope for the Unhoused. Um, this is our first week of trying it and then we're gonna see how it goes and expand it further to not just the main cafeteria, but in like the other locations too. So, and following their presentation, um, Ms. Norma Morales and Ms. Stewart will be hosting their Resource Fair on March 2nd for student services. And ASB is hoping, hoping to partner with them and collaborate in their service initiatives and documentary, documentary screenings and other student outreach. And as we look forward to student elections, um, I was wondering if we could all work together on the student board member guidelines and how we're gonna be electing the future ones. Um, and after the CSBA conference, other student board members wanted to create like a guide to on how to be a board member. So we should probably create one for our district. And you guys can ta- talk about what you expect out of a board member too. So, um, one suggestion that I had was that they would be a sophomore or junior so that they can be in the role for a little bit longer. Yeah, so that's all. Thanks.
Great. Thank you so much. Next item, Item 15 Board Group Agreements. Essence time for the board group agreements. We'll move on to Item 16, War Communication Request. Start with, uh, Trustee Norwood.
Thank you, Board President. Um, over the past two weeks, I had the opportunity, uh, to, um, do quite a bit of work in particularly supporting, uh, what our board member, our student board member talked about in terms of developing student board member curriculum or, uh, a student board member handbook, uh, with, uh, CSBA. That is currently underway and that'll be a project that will involve other school board members across the state in terms of its design. And, um, Tavika and the team will be a big part of that and I'll, I'll yield the rest of the time.
Thank you, Trustee Norwood. Trustee Zhang.
Thank you, President, uh, President, no. Um, I just wanna highlight, uh, I attended the, uh, MUSD Raffy I just want to highlight, I attended the MEAS Craft Feed last week. It was an awesome event as well as several of my colleagues here. I'm going to skip the other things, and I would like to make a request to discuss how are we doing with Randall enrollments for next year as a potential study session for the future? How you do the rest of my time as well?
Yep, we have that coming up in the spring.
Great. Thank you. Trustee John, Board Clerk Nakka.
Thank you, President No. Good evening, everyone. Happy Lunar New Year to every one of you who celebrates that. And regarding the community events that I've been active and attending so far since the last meeting, it's the Kiwanis Craft Feed alongside my colleague, board members. I did attend that. It was a huge turnout, and we look forward to the Chamber Craft Feed coming up in the month of March. And I did attend the Lunar New Year at the Community Center and some of the Chamber and Executive Board Members, Board Meetings of the Rotary. And the Performing Arts Groundbreaking alongside my colleagues and Superintendent Jordan. And I did also attend the Capital Advisors Group Workshop at SCOE, the Santa Clara County of Education, and the LAC meeting as well. So I'm looking forward to attending many more meetings to understand like the Legislative Act and Action Committee alongside Trustee Norwood. And that concludes my report. Thank you, President No.
Thank you, Board Clerk Nakka. Vice President Yashon.
Hi, good evening and happy Lunar New Year. First, my report. I attended the Block Construction Tour. I attended the City Milpitas 70th Celebration, the MHS Performing Arts Groundbreaking, State of Education, Capital Advisory Budget Perspective. Participated in the Career Day at Spangler, talking about what I do on my regular job. Attended the New Year Celebration in Milpitas and attended Sinnet's Public Service Announcement Concert, which is amazing. I also attended the Kiwanis Craft Feed and the Burnett Great Shoe Giveaway, another amazing event. And the Vietnamese Flag Raising at 70 West Heading for the New Year Celebration of the. And that's about it.
Thank you, Vice President Yashon.
Thank you.
Sheen Kwaila, Sunday Fire Law, and Chiknam Namoyi, wishing everyone a happy Lunar New Year. Along with my colleagues, attended several of the same community events. In addition, attended the Black History Flag Raising Event at the Milpitas City Hall as well. With that, we'll move on to Item 17, Learning and Development, the LCAP Midyear Update.
Yeah, I can share the presentation. Let me, give me a minute.
Wendy and I are tag teaming on this report.
Then maybe Scott, could you up the, yeah, I have some technical difficulty here.
Thank you, Scott. Hey, so this is the mid-year report. We can go to the next slide. The mid-year report is a new report. As you know, we present to you on LCAP metrics throughout the school year. But based on legislation, this is a required report that has to happen in February by February 28th. Next slide. So one of the first slides here is just on the budget. You approved the LCAP with the estimated budget based on what we knew from the governor's office at the time. And then you can see there are some slight updates, some increases as of the first interim. Next slide. So what I'm sharing today are data points that you haven't already seen. What I'm highlighting for you here is from Goal One. Goal One focuses on curriculum and instruction. And what you can see here are our graduation rates in comparison also to our A to G completion rates. A to G completion is about the number of students who have completed the course requirements to be UC/CSU eligible. In terms of graduation, we are very close to, if not exceeding, all of our graduation targets for the three-year LCAP goal. We have some work to do with regards to our A to G completion rates. As we look into this data annually and throughout the year, we've unpacked some areas that we know that we need to grow. In particular, what we are doing a deeper dive on right now are transcripts analysis analyses to really understand what's happening. So A to G is not just one course, it's a whole set of courses. And what we are finding, particularly for our English language learners, is that they're often short for one class. Something to understand when looking at that data for ELs is if they have been reclassified, they show up in the all category. So if you are still an English language learner, often you are taking at the high school level additional English support classes, and it limits your ability to take elective classes, which are arts classes, language classes are part of the A to G requirement. Next slide. This slide shows you the AP pass rate. Here you can see again that we are close to or exceeding our desired goals. One of the areas again for us to continue to work is around access. So what you're seeing here is not just how many kids took the test, but of the students who took the test, how many are earning a passing score. So that in an AP test or advanced placement test, that's a test, a score of three, four, or five. It's out of five-point scale. So this is the percentage of students exceeding there. Next slide.
Priti, why would we show the pass rate of the AP exam versus the pass rate in the class?
Why, why would I?
Yeah, right. You had mentioned the AP pass rate. When I first heard that, I was thinking about how many students are passing the AP class. Right? But you referenced the test, which is separate from the class.
Correct. So why show the test rate? The test rate is a national marker, right? So the course is still graded by the teacher. You have a syllabus that's approved by College Board and Curricula and so on. But there's still that individuality of the teacher. So when we are really trying to look at how are we doing and have an outside marker, the AP pass rate is one that would show you that. Thank you. Right, next slide.
Okay, I'll speak to this one. So this is the summary of our actual spending as of December 31st, 2023 versus our budget. So you can see the blue portion represents the mid-year expenditures were about 48%. And that means we still have about 52% to spend from now, from December all the way to June 30th. And this is how the business services, we update this expenditure report. Scott, can you click the Goal One? We attached, shared a Google Doc there, just. Yes. So this is what we did. And for each goal, and we listed the actions in the doc, in the, like this shared Google Doc. So we listed each action here, and then with the object code and also their salaries and the benefit, this is their original budget. And then as of December 31st, and the actual expenditures, we print, we run in our financial system. So that's how we came up with the percentage for each goal.
Next slide. So Goal Two focuses on the whole child aspects, really thinking about social, emotional well-being, attendance, and making sure students feel a strong sense of belongingness here. Again, these data points we share with you monthly at these board meetings, but this is what the data in aggregate from August to December. So as the superintendent has shared, our goal for attendance is 97%. We're a little bit short of that at 95%. And then what you see below is a chronic absenteeism rate. And what I, what's highlighted in yellow is where there's significant disproportionality. So that means when we look at the proportion that that student group makes up in our district versus what's the percentage that they are making up in the chronic absenteeism total. Similarly, for suspension data, this is looking at it in aggregate. This is again August to December data. And then we've highlighted some areas that we know we have to continue to dig deeper and do more work. In terms of next steps, specifically in addressing attendance around our students with disabilities under the guidance of Executive Director Dorpinghouse, she's really encouraging all of our site teams to follow up with IEP meetings, right? To make sure that we are not seeing the disability as a reason that you would not be here in school and encouraging school teams to hold meetings to discuss attendance and how we can make sure our students are in school. One of the other things that we have uncovered in terms of the reasons behind the absenteeism is transportation. And so Coordinator Sugimura is also reviewing our board policies and ARs connected to, I'm forgetting, administrative regulations related to that around our transportation routes and services. One of the things that we've noticed is like geographically, our students that are on the other side of the McCarthy Overpass is where the transportation struggle is. And then, as you saw, just the brilliant example from Rose. When that PBS work, the community building circles, SEL all come together beautifully, has those positive impacts both on attendance and then the reduction in student behaviors that are harmful to learning. So we need to continue to expand that work and deepen it and have the excellence that's happening at Rose across our school sites.
Quick question on the, whoops, on Goal Two. If I were to take the top two below SES and our Hispanic families, those are high numbers. Is the primary reason, as you point out, transportation, or is there something else going?
I think it is transportation, but I will defer to Dorpinghouse, Executive Director Dorpinghouse, if transport, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I would say transportation is a major issue that is coming up across the board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this is a summary of our actual expenditures under Goal Number Two. And you can see we actually spent about almost 60% for the school year versus our budget. I mean, because when we originally developed the budget or developed the plan, and there are also things changed when we start to implement. So under each goals and the expenditures, and this category Goal Number Two, we spend a little bit more. You will see in Goal Number Three, we spend a little less. But overall, I'm pretty sure after we close out the book at the end of the year, and we will be able to meet our compliance, so we will fully spend the supplemental funds, at least. We have no issues to spend our money, for sure. Next slide, please.
So Goal Three, we don't currently have any metrics to share out. This one, Goal Three focuses on our partnerships, in particular with families. And we do an annual survey in the spring to get their feedback on how the work that the schools and the district has been doing. And so I don't have that data at this time to share.
Priti, what type of data would you be compiling for the Goal Three?
For this one, it's the same survey that we send every year, and there's three parts to it. So it's one about like communication, the other one is about supports, and I'm forgetting part three of the, but it's a Google survey that we send out every year that asks parents to tell us how we're doing in particular areas.
Gotcha. More feedback from the data versus, because I was thinking like the Rose family, the attendance, right? The families, that could be a metric that you could utilize as a progress report.
Right. So I will leverage the school principals to help send that survey out. We can, we look at the data both by school level and then, or by individual schools as well as in aggregate. So Rose should get some really positive data back. We're not yet at that place where we are hosting community events with that same level of enthusiasm at the site level, right? So there are areas to grow, and then it's, as we continue to collaborate, we can also share best practices with each other.
Thanks, Priti. So Priti, on kind of on the same lines as President No, would it be fair to take a look at participation in PTA or PTL or school site council or other parent coffees? Or that each of the sites offer their parents to, as a way to perhaps measure our parent engagement?
So if, so the LCAP has these predetermined metrics already there, and ours is for these, for the three years that we're wrapping up, is this Google survey? That's the only thing that's in there. As we look ahead to developing a new LCAP, we can certainly add other metrics and participation in these different committees can, we could be, is something for us to look at and consider.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide. So in closing, graduate, graduation rates have steadily increased. This shows our core classes are, the pass rates there are really high. Summer school has also supported the graduation process. And April Acceleration Academy has supported our elementary students to continue to build skills where there might be gaps, as well as our secondary students at Calaveras Hills. Challenges continue to be around that student engagement piece in particular for specific groups. And as we highlighted, transportation being one of them. And then we want to continue to work on increasing A to G access and AP access for our students. One of the other things that we're looking at is just a course audit and making sure all of our courses have been submitted for A to G approval. And there's a couple that are eligible, but we haven't submitted. So that's something I'm working with the secondary principals on. And so then again, in terms of next steps, as we continue to think about how to bring all of our students in, we're exploring different partnerships, Graduation Alliance, Secondary Summer Bridge Program. We, as you've seen, we've done a lot to revamp what elementary summer school looks like. And this year, we are starting to revamp what secondary summer school can look like. And then as we continue to build that culture where there are SEL practices, positive rewards for your behavior, as well as circles, we're building teacher capacity in that area, continuing with restorative practices, training throughout the district. And then we have a teacher leader cohort around that at the elementary level, as well as a graduation committee that is working on some of those pieces of what courses count for what and how do you get credits and different things like that. Thank you so much. And then if the, attached in the appendix, so as Wendy shared with you, there's that detailed budget. And then here is the detailed list of all the metrics. So you can, oh, well, I'll give you access to that if you don't have it. But yeah, then you can see across every single outcome. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Priti. Board members, any other questions? No, thank you for the midyear update. It's important to really continue to pick up the process. I know that this wasn't necessarily the LCAP that you built, but you know, continue to assess, to find ways to continue to improve upon the outcomes. Appreciate that.
Yeah, and I'm looking forward to building the new one collaboratively with you as well as our parents, our students, and our teachers and administrators as well. So soon, parents of our, we've already been reaching out to families to get their involvement. And then soon we'll be reaching out to others in the community to also have theirs.
Thank you. Moving on to Item Two, Plan to Create Alternative Diploma Track for Students with Disability Who Take the California Alternative Assessment.
Yes, Director Weiss will be coming up to do this presentation this evening. Just for a little bit of context, California Ed Code 51225.31 is a relatively new ed code. And it does require that we develop an alternative diploma. And it does require that we develop an alternative diploma pathway for our students who take the California Alternative Assessment. And so Director Weiss is leading that charge this year. He will be providing to the board and our community an overview of what this entails, what's been done to date, and then what is yet on the horizon as we complete this plan and move forward with implementation of ed code. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Dorpinghaus. Good evening, School Board, Superintendent Jordan and members of the Executive Cabinet. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about an exciting new program to increase equity in the district. Uh, next slide, please. We have the opportunity to create a way for our students to earn a new alternative pathway diploma, which will complement the certificate of completion. The details are still being worked out on that. This new diploma is based on the California Alternative Assessment Program, which provides a way to measure student progress on state standards for students with significant cognitive disabilities. Next slide, please. The alternative pathway diploma is a valuable option for students with disabilities who may not be able to succeed in traditional high school classrooms. Rather than taking regular high school courses alongside typical peers, which might not be appropriate, it allows these students to earn a diploma that recognizes their achievements and prepares them for success after graduation. Next slide, please. The eligibility requirements for the alternative pathway diploma ensure that students with the most extensive special needs who take the California Alternative Assessment, or CAA, and earn the diploma as outlined in their individualized education plans can demonstrate their mastery of the essential skills and knowledge necessary for success in life after high school or post-secondary education. Next slide, please. The components of the alternative pathway diploma are aligned to the California Alternative Achievement Standards through the National Center and State Collaborative Core Content Connectors. The course of study will include academics as well as career exploration and essential life skills. Next slide, please. The new pathway, the new diploma pathway ties into the LCAP in several ways, including promoting rigorous instruction in academics as well as equity for all students. Next slide, please. We have already begun the process and will be finished by the end of the school year. We hope to be able to offer appropriate classes starting in the next school year. Elementary and middle school teachers will need to start implementing the pathway and teaching the standards as soon as possible. And we are looking at the Teach Town curricula to support the teaching of the standards for our students who will be pursuing this diploma. This was just a brief overview today. Thank you so much for listening. Are there any questions or anything else I can clarify?
Thank you, Jeff. Just out of curiosity, within MOPUS Unified, how many potential students would take advantage of this particular pathway?
I think we could have anywhere up to thirty to forty students, perhaps. So it's a small percentage, but it's, it's very impactful because generally these students are not earning a diploma right now. And so it's exciting to be able to offer this pathway.
Exactly. Thank you, Jeff.
Sure.
Yeah, but question, question.
Will current high schoolers be able to get the diploma?
Uh, right now it's only available to students who are sophomores, freshmen and sophomores. Next year it'll be freshmen, sophomores and juniors. And then in two years, all students will be able to earn it.
That's great.
Yeah. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Next, we have Superintendent's Office, Artificial Intelligence Board Advisory Committee.
Thank you, President No. Mr. Forster, would you please put that agenda summary up as it has resources and also the outline for the board's consideration? Thank you. So as the, for this item, the recommendation is for the board to discuss what an AI advisory task force or committee goal would be? And also to determine if this would be a committee of the board as provided for in our board policy. Scott, could you move it up a little bit, please? As provided in our board policy ninety-one thirty, which describes the board's ability to create committees and subcommittees? Or if it would be a task force under the superintendent as described under Board Policy twenty-two thirty? The main difference is, as far as I could tell, primarily the name. It seems that a committee would, a board's committee would then need to follow the Brown Act requirements for posting of the agenda ahead of time, like we do with C-Back, assuring that we don't have any more than two board representatives on the committee. And for a task force that doesn't follow those parameters. And then in addition to determining the purpose, I would suggest that the board consider what goals it would like to accomplish. And then along that line, would this be an ongoing standing committee? If it's a committee of the board? Or would it have a specified time limit such as like eighteen months to three, three years, depending on what the goals are that the board wants it to accomplish? And then I've also provided for the board some different resources that other entities have already established around the idea of AI policy as well as the California School Boards Association launching its AI task force as something for inspiration.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. So as I open up for to our board members and student board reps, any initial thoughts as far as the AI committee?
I think it should be a standing committee and it should include students because AI is always changing. And students will know about what, what they can use to cheat or help them support their education too. So that'd be great.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I also concur that it should be a ongoing committee because you know, AI is still relatively speaking new as we start, especially into education realm. So I believe that as we start to develop, for example, board expertise in how we use AI for students as well as staff, we may find the areas that we look at need to learn more about. So I think it is important that we have that committee take a look at what is there, what is possible? And how would it apply to our district as an initial pass? I also think there's opportunities in addition to learning opportunities. I think there's a huge amount of productivity that can be offered as opportunities to our staff as we ask our staff to do a lot and using AI can be a productivity enhancement. And from a board perspective, I think we need to understand, does the board have to develop new board policies to fit this realm of AI? So that's where I would believe that at least the initial purpose of the AI committee could be. And at the end of the day, I like us to be the leader in the county on AI for education.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Joe. Any other comments, board members?
I would like to know if there is any difference in the protocols as far as the task force as opposed to the committee? Are there any term limits that we are looking at?
So, uh, great question that you raised, Board Clerk Nakka. This is where we get to decide as far as how we appropriately build this committee or task force. A committee typically i- is a group that will do more of an assessment. A task force will be purposeful as far as executing. So in those terms and terminology, that's the separation between task force and committee. Now, again, we're here to discuss whether or not as a board committee or board task force, what should we develop one as a board and what should the board committee or task force focus on?
There is one other difference that I want to make sure you, you have as you discuss it. That is, if it is a committee of the board, then it follows all of the Brown Act and only two board members would be able to participate. Otherwise, the superintendent for our board policy could create a task force. It's the terminology too that is in our board policy that if you create a task force, then it's under the superintendent. If it's a committee, it would be a board.
Thank you. And the two board members are just the elected board members. These two board reps don't count towards the number.
Correct, yeah.
So I'm, I'm sorry, clarification. So even in a task force, we're still limited with the two board members, is that correct?
If we were to create a task force, just to be conservative, yes, I would recommend only two board members participating. However, there are other times when we have groups that come together and if the board wanted to be present to observe, then we would need to be careful about what we discuss. So like if we had and like the focus one might just be simply learning about what AI is and how AI could be impact, could impact the instruction. That might be something where all of the board members could be present. But then we just need to be very careful that we don't talk about any implication for policy.
Got it. And last question in terms of the logistics of it. Is it, is it, does it have to be an either or? Could it, could it be such that there are certain things that we might want truly a board committee? And then there's also other things that might fall better under the working group?
The other things that might fall better under what?
Uh, in your task force, I'm sorry, task force.
I know, I would suggest one or the other because we want to make sure that we have the best capacity of staff to be able to focus on whatever the work is.
And that's fair. Okay.
Thank you, President No and Superintendent Jordan.
Any thoughts, trustee Norwood?
I'm wondering if committees would be able to do like district lessons too? Or is that only the task forces that can do like something like our digital citizenship lessons? Like ask, like something to be educated on during homeroom, like the risks of AI? Or like which, which form, like a committee or a task force would be able to roll that out in the district?
So that's where you're getting to where the board's responsibility is in the realm of policy, not in the realm of creating lessons.
There's a trickle-down effect, Sabika. So when we talk about a board advisory committee, you're engaging as far as the thought process in regards to either pulling resources, pulling language, policy, and that becomes the guiding principle to the rest of the executive cabinet and staff to kind of execute on. So really what we're talking about is formulating an overarching theme or goal or purpose.
It could, and building on what President No said, ultimately that could lead to learner outcomes. For example, in twenty-eighteen, the board adopted the California Computer Science Standards, which are learning outcomes. And then it's up to staff to determine how to make sure the educators know what those are and then ways that they can integrate them into their content area.
I think the, um, the idea behind, thank you Superintendent for adding this to the agenda. I think the idea behind the AI task force or committee or the board has the same outcome. One, us creating awareness that AI is a tool out there that we're going to pay attention to very intently to serve our students. That there are, besides all the good things that are happening with AI, there are some uses out there that could create danger in our infrastructure as well. For our ability to measure the, the positive as well as potentially the alternative effects of different types of uses of AI, because AI isn't one thing. But the fact that we've become educated as a, as a board, if there were a task force, two members of the board, they would also have the ability to report back to this board as well as the community in terms of what we're doing. We also have the opportunity to engage the, the wide variety of organizations or potential partners in the city that are dealing with things AI that may be helpful to our education system at different levels. So there's, there's a lot of energy around that and a lot of organizations that have resources that are paying close attention to it. That us getting involved in having an AI task force in comparison to a committee. I would, if I had a choice, I would probably lean more towards the task force terminology because there is potentially a timeframe that we have a task force. We understand the work that we want to see moving forward from the district. And then it transitions into a committee, an ongoing committee that Rob has referenced, but we put a task force timeline together in terms of how much time that we want to investigate. Who do we want to bring in to be a part of it? In terms of businesses in the city or in the, in the region? So that one, again, we can be well-educated and support our students and our community as well.
Thank you, trustee Norwood. Vice President, your turn.
Yeah, I echo my colleague there. I do like the idea of having a task force and we can, you know, engage students, board member, staff or community out there and maybe like have a term of, I don't know, two or three years or something like that because technology is always changing. We're living in the, you know, Bay Area and we don't know what's going to happen in, in two or three years. If we want to, we can extend it or will there be another type or another, you know, technology out there that, you know, we might want to look into at that time? But I definitely do like the task force.
Thank you, Vice President, your turn. So it sounds kind of majority that there should be a task force that is with a specific timeline, as we talked about and listened to the feedback. The, the implementation, you don't want to miss the implementation if you keep an ongoing. What I heard trustee Norwood also say was that it can be ongoing once we get to the implementation. So with the task force initially, with that purposeful focus to pull in the resources, pulling the ideas and really get an execution plan put together. Then at that point, bring it back to the board to, to, to fully discuss and then potentially create a, a ongoing committee once a, a guiding execution plan is put together. Any other thoughts, anything I missed?
I, I do want to just emphasize that as members of the board, at least some of us need to be well-educated with AI. I think it is important for us to, to participate. Those who are interested, I, I encourage them to make sure they participate.
I, I think we can build that in as far as timely updates to the rest of the board and also as part of our assignments on an annual basis, revisit that as well. Yep, after all that, Superintendent.
Yes, can you say the last thing though?
During our annual assignments of board committees, you can also revisit as far as the task force assignment.
Got it.
And how we mentioned earlier, including our student board reps as part of the task force.
President, oh, just a here a clarification question. So uh when we talk about a task force, is this something led by the board? Or is this someone, is this something led by superintendent or who's leading this?
I'll probably say it's a collaborative effort um with the board and the superintendent.
Okay.
That would be my guess.
Yeah, so um based on Superintendent's comments, the task force is gonna be created under her uh based on um the language here. Uh but to trustee Norwood's um comments, it will be collaborative between the 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 board members uh that will be selected uh amongst us here.
And then I would also add some of our staff who are already ahead of others in this area.
Is there any?
So the next thing too that I would like um for consideration is are there particular um areas for representation, such as we said already, uh staff, board, uh students. Um I heard um business. Are there any other types of representatives that we would want to include? I'm assuming parents as well.
Businesses.
Businesses.
Yeah, definitely. Community engagement would add value.
Would you mind saying that again, please?
I think community engagement would definitely add value to the inputs that we get. And probably like any other committee, uh I would, I I strongly feel there should be at least a two year, two year term limit on the committee. If that can be considered.
Uh I believe we've seen like last like uh a one year, because we're gonna revisit uh during our annual assignments.
We can pilot it and probably, yeah.
Which means that, you know, a member could continue on more than a year, but you know, it gives us the opportunity to do some checking balances on annual basis.
I would add county. I know the county is doing uh work uh in that area. They recently hosted an event. Little Town Valley Leadership Group um is continually putting out uh reports on, uh they have an AI committee as well. Um letting us know what industry is doing around that that may connect to workforce development and education or how it's used as a tool. So um those are two other areas. And then I'm not sure what the city uh of Milpitas is is doing itself around AI.
Oh, they have the tech commission.
Possibly the tech commission, yep.
We did, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um there are also a lot of school clubs. I think there are like four or five that are AI based at MHS already. And um I know this nonprofit called the AI Education Project that has curriculum for um teacher literacy in AI. And um there's also a youth nonprofit called the, called N Code Justice that talks about AI policy around the nation.
Did you tell me how to spell the first part?
Um, the first one is called A I E D U. And then the the one for youth led policy is called
Oh, you said youth ed policy. Is that the title of it?
I'll email it to you.
Okay, thank you.
And one other group that we can get involved, uh um the police officers in in the city as well, because we we know that we
Yes, there's a captain focused on that.
Yeah, uh we talk about the potential safeguards um that are implemented and and uh gain their feedback as far as, you know, potential outcomes or changes that could affect, you know, how how they uh keep uh safety and security in in our city.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Superintendent Jordan, that we need to consider?
Um, so the purpose is to become educated on what is and what resources are available. Uh determine, do we need uh AI policy, create awareness of the tool that we can use for benefiting uh educators and learners. And then uh regular reports to the board on progress and ultimately an outcome of next steps and direction.
That summer says it.
Okay.
Good. Looking forward to it.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving on to item eighteen, action items, business services. Item one, the Swinton Builders uh amendment for the Milpitas High Performing Arts Center.
Yes, tonight we'd like the board to approve the amendment with Swinton for the uh beam uh software. The beam is a building information modeling. It's a, it's a software and for the high school performance art center. So we have consultant Travis Kirk from T B K and also a representative from Swinton to share with you what is this a beam about and the overall process.
Uh good evening, is this uh, good evening, Board President No, members of the board, executive cabinet. I'm here tonight with Angie Wu as a project executive for Swinton Builders to talk to you about uh building information modeling and what that is and and what it means to us. But a little bit of background on this. Um as you know, we were attempting to do a award this project as a lease leaseback and through the pandemic escalation, et cetera. Um we, the district took the bold step to go ahead and low bid this project. And in an attempt and an effort to keep the cost as low as possible, we removed this BIM modeling requirement from our standard front end documents. We felt like that would drive the price down, make sure we get the best price possible. Um we did have three responsive bids come back. They were all ballpark within about a million dollars of each other on a project this this size. It was a really good tight bid, so we're very fortunate for that. And the bid was um um far less than what our lease leaseback proposal was. So we were, we were happy with that. So as we got under contracting, we started working with Angie and her team. Um Angie said, well, why don't we revisit this BIM modeling and and um talk about maybe re implementing that? And so we had a lot of discussions about the benefits of it and which is really clash detection between the trades. Helps drive the schedule, helps you solve problems before they arise, because it's a lot easier to fix problems with a click of a mouse than a sledgehammer uh or a backhoe or excavator. And so um we started to revisit this and we started to talk about cost. And the cost is pretty high for this, for this um um but it's a very effective tool. And so what Swinton did in a spirit of teamwork and 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 having a mutual beneficial project or uh product here is say, look, we're gonna dramatically reduce our, what we would have charged you in the bid. We're gonna reduce that a lot, because they feel there's a benefit to their team to drive schedule, to deliver the product on time. And there's a benefit, of course, to the district in that maybe we avoid some costly change orders. So with that, I'll turn it over to Angie and she can give you a brief presentation on what um BIM modeling is and how it impacts the job. And then we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Travis. Good evening, everyone. Um so I'm just gonna share a brief overview what the BIM process is. But I wanted to kind of share why this is so effective, because construction maybe just all hands on with the materials. But as the technology evolved, that we embrace a lot of changes and embrace the technology. And BIM process is one of the technologies that's again getting more implemented, more standardized in construction. So today, tonight, I'm just, it's a a quick overview. I'll call it cliff version, but um at least you understand what you're investing on the Milpitas um High School Performing Arts Center. The next slide. So the BIM is literally stands for building information models. It starts from the design and we need to start the design and carries out to the construction. But what happens in the design, the models, it is just like the the slideshow. There's a different level of development that from what you bring from two D to three D, a lot of people think about the just the three D models and that's it. So why do we need to do more in a construction? So during the design, there's certain things that could only design to. So I think the the cartoon, the LOD two hundred, three hundred is kind of shows you what that is. That's example of like concrete footing and it is just a shape. And that's only they are able to design during the model during the design. So basically, the shapes element what they are. But in construction, we need to put a lot more information into to be more fully developed the models. Because during the design, you don't have a lot of information coming from the subcontractors or manufacturers, the equipments. So that's only gets implemented during the construction. So the I, the next slide will show you what kind of um process that's more easy to understand. Is that during the construction, we upgrade the model. Basically, we build the more, the models that's more detailed, adding a lot of elements, equipments, devices, like light fixtures, the ductworks, the attachment fasteners, every little detail that gets to be built, you model. You upgrade the models and then make sure they all fit together. We combine all different models within different disciplines. And then from that, we detect clash detection. That's what we call it, like conflicts where the duck runs into the wall, when not there, you're not able to um catch during the design, because we have so many different disciplines working the the design development. So we detect all the different clashes. I have some few examples that could show you what those are. And then we overlay those with architectural design to make sure they're within the door openings or windows. And at the end, a lot of effort puts in, we sign off the models. And that's everything's been coordinated with different disciplines and subcontractors. And that gets into shop drawing and then into the fabrication. So you're, you're fabricating what's already coordinated in virtual. And then when that gets fabricated onto the site, we're able to install. And what we use for the layout is that's uh the total station that kind of gives you three D um grid lines, X, Y, Z, and that way you're able to know where the penetrations are, where the fasteners, where the hangers will be installed. And that way the conflicts are already resolved. You're able to minimize as much as we can, so you're not stop and go and stop and go. So with that, and then also starts with the installation. So we don't wanna avoid coordinating during the construction, because when you do, you have already materials fabricated and then you wait until the conflict is resolved. If you had to refabricate, then there's a cost involved and also mostly it's a schedule, because you had to wait for the material and fabrication to come in. That's the time and costs and savings that we're trying to implement early in the project. And that way, at the end of the project, you're minimized and able to do. So I have a few slides that can show you what that clash detection looks like in the real world. So if you go to next slide. So this is one of the restrooms. As you can see, the green is the plumbing pipe that's coming from the roof. And as you can tell, it's landing in right outside of the wall, which conflicts with the grab bar. And during the construction, when the ready to insert the bar, we could shift the wall to encapsulate the piping. But then again, it's in the restroom where you have a ADA um requirements, the distance. By time you're trying to shift the the toilet to meet the ADA requirement, now you're conflicted with the case and the dimensions. Now you're kind of compromised with the space that you're um you're supposed to have. So in that way, um the the issues gets resolved and then allowed to wait. The design gets done and everybody needs to buy into what the reconfiguration of the space is. So that's one of the conflicts. That's really um the, you can't get away with the ADA requirements. And the next slide. Um this is one of the ceilings. You can see the the wavy line is the architectural um ceiling. As you can see, it's a fancy architectural feature. It's not really reflecting on the drawings, but when we model, you get to see all the the plumbing, the overhead pipings coming in. And also you could see the conflicts for the wall louver openings that is conflicting with the different um the levels of the ceiling feature. So you're not able to catch this until the ceiling gets in at almost the finished stage of the project. That means the wall's already framed, the wall's already finished and the opening's already made. Now you're not um you're compromising the finishes and the functionality of the the system. In that way, we're able to um the get the different elevations of the ceiling, that way you're able to avoid either um the lower the the piping, or I mean the the raised piping, or just with the ductwork. So that gets handed out earlier in the project, like right now, before we actually fabricate and deliver on site. And then I have a couple more in the next slides. This um it's just kind of hard to tell, but it's conflicting with the ceiling height and the ductwork. The ductwork is already sized by the engineers. By the time we get fabricated and delivered on site, we're ready to install, it does not fit into the ceiling. It conflicts with the ceiling height. So now you're at the, at the the stage, you either have to lower the ceiling or we have to modify the ductwork system to fit in within the the system. For and then we had to wait for the engineer to make sure different size or different shape of the ductwork will meet the requirement of the condition in the space. So you're down to kind of making the, getting the engineer involved, waiting for their design and possibly refabricating the ductwork. And then waiting for that, so not that space is not able to finish or continue on. So all of this getting kind of modeled, make the adjustments, modification in virtual. And that way, when we fabricate, you're fabricating the materials that's already coordinated. And then next slide. This is a a typical example of like casework conflicting with the ductwork. By the time the the casework gets inserted, the end of the, most mostly end of the project, it's conflicting with the ceiling and then the casework. And then next one. This is just showing different types of uh um overhead piping, ductwork, conduits that's going in. We typically use different colors to identify what the different disciplines are. As you can see, they're they're hitting clashing almost everywhere in the ceiling. And these are real projects from Swinton's other projects. That's um that we kind of, I snipped it from the other projects, but it shows that the conflict they do exist. It's difficult to avoid during the design, so it is standard. That's why we like to implement, because it's the best practice and to us, it's the right thing to do. And it's a, it may be a a cost spend upfront, but it's this cost saving at the towards in the project that when you're not ready to open for school and pushes out waiting for certain materials, refabricating, it's just not something that we are not in control of. We wanna be able to invest early to make sure that we have control over and doesn't impact the the finish date. Uh I think that's, that's two of the examples. Um I'd like to share like some of um our real um clashes that we may be encountering or performing art center to, you know, some of one of the classes that uh high school offers. And that way, kind of it's it's hard to see, but when you uh move the models around, it's really nice to see how that's coming to life. Thank you. Any questions?
Great, thank you so much, Scott. Do we have any public comments?
There's an impact that is
Gotcha. Uh board members, any questions or comments?
I do. Um, so I understand the the value of three D modeling. Um but the three D model that you create is only as good as how well you interpret the original design, right? So I guess my question is, you know, give me an idea of your experience in translating designs to three D models and um how, you know, from your experience, how much cost savings, whether it's time or money, or the avoidance of refabricating. Could you give me an idea of what that looks like?
Uh actually, can I share the last slide? Could that kind of shows you the overall impact of how much of impact during the design and after the end of the construction? And the dollar, the cost wise, it's it's substantial. Um because, you know, some of the times you're not able to really put a dollar value, but it is substantial. But if you could, sorry, it's kind of slow. So that's kind of comparison impact over time. And if we put a lot of efforts in under, earlier in the project, programming, design and and all, then your um the impact over time gets minimal. But like, I don't know, it's not showing up, but there's a couple more bell curves. There you go. So so the optimal time to implement this is during the design and carrying it through the construction. And that's the orange bar where you're having a lot of impacts upfront. But towards the end of it, that that impact is minimized. Right now for our Milpitas High School, we're kind of at the dash line, because we're implementing it during construction. But still, that's better than the other blue line where you're trying to compress at the towards the end of it. So depends on the size of the project, dollar value, value maybe lock high or one, but I think at the end it's mostly the schedule that we are able to control and not waiting for certain materials or certain redesigning or engineering that we had to wait.
So which which line are we currently?
Um the dash line, because we're procurement is kind of like the construction at this point right now.
Okay, um. So you're saying that if we
So you're saying that if we go, if we do this investment now, uh, we'll be minimizing change orders?
Yes, and also control the schedule and the time.
Because ultimately going down this path, we could end up with more costs. There is a there is a prob- there is a possibility that we could end up with more costs by going in this direction and identifying things that we may not have included in the original design.
I wouldn't say more costs. I think the cost later down would be more costly than the cost we're investing now.
Right, because because what I'm because what I'm being told is that we didn't go lease leaseback. We got a better price uh by not going lease leaseback. And then now on top of that better price, we're looking to shift uh process in doing BIM, which is a new additional cost to the new um to the to the different direction that we've gone in outside of lease leaseback. And then from that, we're gonna, by doing the BIM modeling, we could discover other costs that we may have that would potentially become change orders, but we could also uh reduce our overall costs.
Yeah, I I think the difference is one way or another, those change orders are going to show up, right? So they'll they're going to show up through this BIM modeling process where they go, oh, my goodness, we didn't fabricate this ductwork yet. We need to, we need to change from a sixteen inch diameter, you know, round duck through this channel and make it a rectangular duck that's wider, it meets the requirements. It's much easier to change in this than it is uh when the guys here are trying to hang the duck and realize it doesn't work. So that's part of it. The other part is uh the BIM modeling is part of our standard front-end documents in this district. Uh, we do have BIM modeling weaved into the lease leaseback agreements that we've given every other contractor. We just pulled it for maximum savings due to the impacts of the pandemic and escalation. We wanted to make sure we got the best price possible on this project so that we could build this project for the community. And when we realized, yeah, we did get it, we saved a a bunch of money there by doing that. Um, then it was time that that we readdress, hey, well, maybe we put this BIM modeling back in. And that's where Swinerton agreed that it's mutually beneficial, so they discounted this BIM modeling cost from what it would have been had we left it in the front end docs, we're less than half of that cost now. But as far as change orders go, um.
Right, because you taught us, right? Because you were the one that taught us about when we deal with uh contracts or construction, one of the things that we want to attempt to avoid, or what someone will do is a low bid. And then there'll be change orders after the fact, which bring could potentially bring the cost up above what we originally estimated, but they put it in through change orders, right? That was one of the things that
Right, exactly. And this and this is one of those instances where we deliberately removed an element of the bid process uh for as a cost savings measure. And then um, you know, once we got that low cost and it was something that perhaps we could revisit, almost like a deductive alternate or an add alternate, where we say it's not necessarily a change order in this sense. It's more of a, well, do we want to pay for the service now? This two hundred thousand dollars for the benefit of potentially saving a lot more than two hundred thousand dollars? Because it's a one-off building, you know, it's a specialty building. This building has never been designed before, so there's a a greater potential to have conflicts between the trades. And the one o- other thing I would mention is all of these subcontractors come in and they meet with Swinerton's expert, and they're all entering that data together. They work collaboratively collaboratively to to solve these problems. So I say that to say, if you can see this problem ahead of time and say, we need to change the duct before they fabricated the duct, or we need to change the steel before they fabricate the steel, that's a huge savings to the district.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I want to have a follow-up question. Um, this modeling is strictly around construction, right? It's it's not around, for example, it's not modeling uh when we build this this um theater, it's not modeling how well the acoustics are, right? For example, right? It's strictly instruction.
It's it's mostly clash detection between And you can see some of it in here, you know, there was there were some elements when we built this project where we had to slide, we didn't use BIM modeling on this in the same manner. But there were some things that had to slide around in here to make sure that all these elements you see above you work. A lot of times in a lot of gym projects I'm on, it's always the basketball goals. Basketball goals are hitting ductwork, things like that. And those are the things you want to handle ahead of time, so you're not giving these subcontractors an opportunity to ding you with the change orders. So we know those two ducks were three feet closer. And we know that that framework for that basketball goal is going to be in a clash, and we can change that on it, on a with a click of a mouse rather than a change order when everyone's here trying to mount it. That's that's to our advantage.
The but but the following the follow-up question still remains in that at some point in this project, and perhaps not specifically to to BIM modeling, where do we check to make sure that the acoustics are right? Especially for, you know, performing
Right.
parts theater and stuff like that.
Yeah, and in this particular project, we have an acoustics expert that's a subconsultant to uh LPA architects who designed the building. And so we have their input.
I see.
Yep.
Okay.
They they do the acoustical testing after all the finished elements are installed. And they come out, actually do the testing, the sound, to make sure the sound levels met. So they, after, at the end of the the construction or the the finishes and all the install, the acoustical consultant will come out and they do a testing to make sure the sound is within what they designed to.
I see, okay.
We work with the LPA, and they they have a consultant that does it at the end of the project and they create a report.
Okay, thank you.
And also Travis, what about the inspector? Because we also have an inspector, uh inspector of this project on the record.
Right, so the inspector checks for compliance mostly with the three elements the Division of State Architect checks, which is fire, life, safety, access, compliance, and structural. So he wouldn't necessarily come in and say, I like the color of your carpet. But he would come in and say, well, that's number three rebar, and you need number four rebar in that before you pour your concrete. So he checks for compliance with the plans and specs. And one other thing I would say, and I I don't know that we brought it up yet, but um with this and and Angie and I have talked about this, maybe perhaps going into Mr. Koye's class with his kids and giving them a full-on demonstration of what BIM modeling is, going, you see it live in a three D. As a matter of fact, um Ryan Holman at Block Construction, he does a he does a side-by-side with actual video they wear on their hard hat with the BIM modeling, and he can turn it with a mouse and they go simultaneous, and you see right through that wall. And so what happens is you turn that BIM modeling and that record uh recording over to, say, M and O. And then M and O goes, oh, well, we think there's a pipe here, where is it? They can go back and boop, 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 pull that up, and they know exactly where that pipe or that conduit is inside that wall. It's pretty fascinating. It used to be contractors would use BIM modeling, little demonstration, and a truck comes out and they pour in it just to sell a job, at least leaseback job. Anymore, it is a very, very practical tool and a cost-saving tool.
Thank you so much. Any other comments, questions, board members?
I would say, you know, in a district that is looking towards AI and technology, there's an implementation of technology to the old adage, measure twice before you cut, right? And this is what I see as far as uh what you're presenting to us. You know, the the fact that you want to do it right before you actually put it together to minimize potential future costs.
Right.
With that said, uh, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, here a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
A and Fos? Hearing none? Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, item two, disclosure of Mill Peters Teacher Association collaborative bargaining agreement. Assistant Superintendent Business Services.
Yes, tonight I'm very excited to share that we had a tentative agreement with our teachers, uh Barkney Unit, MTA. And uh for Assembly Bill AB twelve hundred, we're required to do a financial disclosure of the cost. So let me share my screen here. And so before the board approved the tentative agreement, and here's the impact, the financial impact. And the the summary is listed here. Basically, uh, we settled with a four percent ongoing salary increases. And I listed only under twenty-three, twenty-four year because this is for twenty-three, twenty-four. And but it's ongoing, so that means that this four percent will apply to our salary schedule, and that will be carried on to twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six. And there is no, none of schedule payment. And our housing and welfare is capped at the current cap. And we also added a a stipend for the doctoral degree. And we also increased some step uh stipend amount here for the duties, and I listed all the duties here. And then the next column here is the cost. So basically, the four percent salary increase ongoing with the statutory benefit, the first year is the cost is about three million sixty thousand to the district. And then the following year, there is a slight increase because each year uh our contractual obligations on step column increase, and that is the four percent increase on that. And then the other stipends that I listed earlier in the over here, and the the cost is about two hundred twenty-five thousand. And for a total, the total cost of settlement is about three million two hundred eighty-five thousand. And then the percentage of increase overall is about four point three percent. And the start rate is not from is capped at nineteen point one percent. And at the time when we, uh, when I prepared this financial disclosure, we have not settled with CSEA and MMA yet. So and then there is, uh, here's the updated multi-year projection, and this is based on our first interim. And basically, the first column is the board-approved first interim budget. And now the uh the settlement, the total cost is here in the middle as an adjustment. And then this will be our revised budget. We're currently working on our second interim budget update, and we will include this projection in our second interim that we will share with the board uh on March twelfth. So this is our financial disclosure. Any questions?
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Wendy. Um, Scott, are there any public comments?
We have no public comment at this time.
Any other questions, board members? No, um, Superintendent Jordan, it says disclosure, so are we taking action on the disclosure? Because it's under action items?
Yes, you're taking action to accept the disclosure that um we then have shared with the uh County Office of Ed that the district can afford the increase and still maintain a positive balance in year three of our three-year projection.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. With that said, do we have a motion to accept the disclosure?
I'll make the motion.
Uh, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any additional uh discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
A and Fos? Hearing none? Disclosure is. Our next item, uh, Human Relations, approve the tentative agreement and memorandum of understanding between MUSD and the Mill Peters Teacher Association.
Good evening. After twelve fruitful, oh, I'm sorry. Clarissa, do you mind taking the podium? MTA uh President, Mill Peters Teachers Association President, Clarissa Isbell. Thanks, Clarissa. Good evening. After twelve fruitful long days and late afternoons, the Mill Peters Teachers Association and the district have concluded negotiations regarding the certificated bargain agreement for September first of two thousand twenty-three to August thirty-first of two thousand twenty-six. The teams worked in good faith in the spirit of negotiation. To negotiate in an effective agreement, it is important to understand the elements of negotiation. Those are what? The issues, the why, the positions, and the how, the interests. I want to call to your attention the individuals behind the problem solving and decision-making in this collaborative process who analyze complex situations, identified priorities, and evaluated various options, keeping students at the center of the work while supporting the certificating unit members. From the MTA negotiation team, MTA President Clarissa Isbell, MTA Vice President Brett Weber, CTA Labor Representative Chaz Garcia, and MTA Members-at-Large Elizabeth Pitts, Laura Polden, Lena Kongfutha Kuhn, Ashley Grilli. And representing the district, our legal counsel Matthew, Joel Darlington, Director of HR, Kristen Stonehouse, Principal Deanna Elsie, Assistant Principal Emily Delora Alveson, Adult Education Principal Juliana Brahim, Principal and Chief Innovator of Mill Peters High School and New Campus Programs Greg Womack, CDC Coordinator Vanessa Espedia, Assistant Superintendent Business Services Wendy John, Executive Director, Directors Mary J. Dorpinghaus and Kreefi Jahari, Tech Services Director Chin Song, Elementary Education Director Rikell Kusunose, and our Executive Secretary Mary Lynn Suarez. Thank you to all of you. And with that, I turn it back to President Mill for an approval on the tentative.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Damon James. Uh, Scott, is there any public comments?
No public comment at this time.
Clarissa, would you like to? Anything?
Um, I want to thank the district for our working relationship. And what's wonderful about our bargaining process is we always have student learning at as the focus in our bargaining. And we um through a lot of conversation, come up with really great language to support our district. So thank you, um, Damon, for um a really great negotiating year. It was, we uh we got a lot done. Thank you. Dude. That that's it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Clarissa. Uh, with that said, do we have a motion to approve the uh tentative agreement in memorandum with the Uh, have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any other additional discussion? Or comments? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
A and Fos? Hearing none? T tentative agreement is approved with the Mill Peters Teachers Association. Thank you so much uh for all you do. Next item, uh, adoption of the school calendar for the twenty twenty-four to the twenty twenty-five school year and the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six school year.
We are a learning district, so I am going to use one of my tools today. And I saw it here. I want to use my empathy tool and my courage. Um, and then I invite HR Director Kristen Stonehouse and um CBAC Chairperson Carla Bayat to the front podium. And then, um, Scott, do you mind sharing the presentation? We have more lanyards if we need them. Thanks, Scott. We move to the next slide. So this first slide really um takes us through the decision-making and representative process that happens with our uh calendar process. Our calendar process is one of the processes we do in this district where everyone has an opinion and everyone wants to provide their input. And so how we do that is that the Human Relations Department creates uh draft calendars generally based on past calendars that we've utilized. And we send out, this year we called it an input provider survey. That input provider survey HR sent to all staff members to provide input. And then the site administrators sent that out to their parent communities. Uh, the um, so speaking for the school sites, the school site administrators then took the input from the parents and shared that with the school site council. The school site council then was to take that information and share that with the CBAC. Um, and then with the Community Board Advisory Council, they discussed that feedback and made final recommendations for the board. On the HR side of the house, which deals with the employee input, we then took the input that the employees provided and we shared that input with CBAC so that CBAC could make an informed decision utilizing both stakeholder groups' input for this for this body. Um, and I think I just want to reiterate, you know, it's representative decision-making and sometimes as that's happening, individuals you know, it's representative decision-making and sometimes as that's happening, individuals are providing input, providing their rationale. It does not necessarily mean that all individuals get what they want, but we do the best that we can to make accommodations for the greater good. So the next slide um shows the timetable. So I remember last year around the same time um receiving direction from the board um with former Assistant Superintendent Jonathan Brunson regarding this next year, we need to have two calendars. Not just one calendar, and so we endeavored to do that by providing uh two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, and two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six calendar for folks to um provide input. That happened in October. And as I mentioned, the in November, the input provider survey was shared, it was disseminated with directions. The input provider survey had a probably about a page and a half of directions, which not only shared uh the process of which they needed to do immediately, but also what the longer process was, that it was going to go through all of the channels that I previously mentioned. In January, we met with the Community Board Advisory Council, and that's where the school site council members shared their input um with the um the group, and then we shared the uh parent or the employee information with the group, and then we discussed. Um and we'll talk a little bit more as we move through the slides about what that discussion was. And now we're here in February with that information to share with you. So I am now going to turn it over to uh Kristen and Carla.
So this is the input and feedback that we received from both staff and um the school site councils. So I'm going to go over kind of the staff input, and those were just general um common uh requests and feedback. And then Carla's going to go over um what she got from the school site councils. So on the right, you can see the proposed uh calendar that was sent out on the uh input survey and um to both the um employees and the parents. So the staff came back with several uh recommendations. Um they, most all of them um voted or feedback was to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five draft calendar A, which is on the slide. Um and adjust the concern of the new uh Lunar New Year holiday and make it a professional development day or in-service day and um have it as a no-school day for students. Um they opted to change the professional development day in December to, I believe it was January. And then um resounding feedback to start school on a Wednesday or Thursday as opposed to the first day of the week. Um and that would allow for more some more planning time and um kind of to lead in and and um not start a full week right away.
And when the um that professional development day was placed in December on the draft calendar and that came through a discussion with the Association's Roundtable, it was really done to assist with the Monday after Thanksgiving attendance concern that sometimes after Thanksgiving, the Monday attendance is low. But uh as you can see, the staff input was um not in favor of doing.
And so you can see on the graph that um seventy-three percent accepted the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five calendar and twenty-seven percent did not.
So the school site council, several recommendations were that the start of the school year would be later rather than Monday to be Wednesday. And not. And then for the second one was the Thanksgiving break would have a sorry, I can't, it's so small. Um not have Monday af- oh, thank you. Not have Monday after Thanksgiving break as a non-school day. Um longer winter break, no week-long break in February. Adjust the concern for the Lunar New Year. So this one was um a little bit more, the feedback from each school was saying that uh why this one? And so uh so instead having it as a in-service day scheduled so it's too close to each other?
So um towards the top of the slide, um the slide, the calendar was sent out with one week off for Thanksgiving. The staff in-service day uh was the Monday after Thanksgiving and um the calendar had two weeks proposed off for winter break and no school, um and it was a non-workday for uh Lunar New Year. Um we can go to the next slide. So these are the two calendars side by side. The one on the left um is um the one that was a draft calendar, and the one on the right was we took into consideration all of the feedback we got from both the uh school site councils and staff um and created the um the calendar that we're gonna move forward uh for recommendation. Next slide. And that was for twenty-four, twenty-five. So now we'll move on to twenty-five, twenty-six, and this um input and feedback, uh again, the calendar that was proposed is on the right. And um on this calendar, we had one week off for Thanksgiving. The staff in-service day was the Monday after Thanksgiving. Um we still had two weeks off for winter break and Lunar New Year was um a no-school and a non-workday for staff. So the staff feedback was um that they up they mostly approved the uh calendar. Sixty-three percent, actually, it's a little bit more. Um I think it's seventy-one percent because when we initially sent out the calendar in the input survey, um we noticed that there was one number that was incorrect. So when making a change in Google Docs, it creates a new link which creates another piece of the pie. So um the yellow and the purple are the same, so we just added those together. Um but then twenty uh nine percent, I believe that is, twenty-eight percent um voted no, they do not want that calendar. So the staff feedback was to approve it. Um they wanted to adjust the concern of the Lunar New Year holiday and make it a professional development day again and no school for students. Uh they wanted to change again the professional development day in December to January and again, start school not at the beginning of the week, but in the middle of the week for the same reasons.
Safe. A safe for the school site council, the start of the school, it will be later in the week. So either Wednesday or Thursday. Um I don't know the reason for why there's a Thursday now, but uh that was the proposed, and move December first in-service day to the January fifth. Um and then same thing with the Lunar New Year, uh that they'd like to make it into a a an in-service.
And for when we met in January with C B A, the it 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 was uh mixed that some did want to observe Lunar New Year and some um parents did not want to observe it. So um taking into consideration um all of the facts, um we are gonna be next slide, unless you have anything to add, Damon. No. Um we are, we made up this the uh calendar on the right, taking into consideration all of the feedback that we got back from parents and staff. Next slide.
Other factors that were included um in, I would say, the behind-the-scenes decision-making the high school graduation, right? When high school, when the actual last day of school is? Um one of the parents from um C B A talked about priorities. And as we're sharing information, mentioned, you know, it'd be interesting to see like what the priorities are of the district when it comes to this calendar process. Because what we found as information was coming forward, some people's priority was to recognize and celebrate various cultural holidays. Some people would prefer to have a longer summer break. Some people prefer to keep things at status quo. And so we found um some conflicting things, right? It wasn't that individuals were not valuing something, it was just originally, we got into this profession particularly to have our summer breaks, and then for some parents, summer is when I have childcare. I don't have childcare if there's a longer December break or there's an additional holiday here or holiday there. And I think that's what led the group to um this final um these two calendars.
Yeah, just for clarification, when you were saying that from the um uh C B A feedback that observed, not observed, you're you're saying it's split as far as the feedback on whether or not to observe certain holiday?
Correct.
Okay.
Some parents, um some uh school site council reps said that they heard that they, from the parents, that they really wanted to observe that holiday and other parents um did not. They just wanted to have it a school day.
Understood.
Thank you. And also mentioned, um because the one holiday that did come up, which came up last year, so was Diwali. Right? So there was also the ask of if, could we also have Diwali um as a holiday potentially? That also came up.
Thank you.
So the calendars before you are the calendars um based on the feedback that um we've created, and those are what we are moving for approval this evening. You want to say anything before they approve? Okay.
Alright, thank you so much. Uh Scott, do we have any public comments?
I do have two written public comments that came in on this topic. First one is from uh Zwan Tao Tran. I see on a two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five calendar, January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five is a teacher in-service day, January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five is Lunar New Year. As an Asian teacher, it's insulting that students have the day off so they could celebrate Lunar New Year with their families, but teachers are expected to be at work. And the other one from Lucille Lei. Also on the Lunar New Year, my family and I really appreciated having Lunar Day off this year. It showed that our district cares about the community. Turning Lunar New Year into a P D day is a step backward. The message is that teachers who celebrate Lunar New Year are not valued and the culture of we is a lie. Please consider approving Lunar New Year as a holiday for all. And those are our public comments.
Thank you, Scott. We're in. Any questions?
Culture of we's not a lie. Um the one question that I have is that I didn't hear um take it into account um the the health factor or our attendance on the days historically. So for example, we've noticed after breaks because of COVID or certain times of year, we have um students that are out um because of health reasons or because of travel, and then we also have the health and well-being of the staff, health-related. How many days in a row um have they been involved in instruction? When do they need a break? When do they need those types of things? I didn't hear those things in included in the factor. I heard parents when they want holidays, um I heard uh I I didn't hear that as a factor. Um was there some inclusion uh of the fact of our trends because we are in attendance um requirement? That's not by our call, uh but that's just the the way that we uh operate. So I I I didn't really hear that piece um in there. So if anyone can speak to that, that would be very helpful for me in making a decision.
Well, we did um initially, I think I mentioned this, but in December, that December holiday after Thanksgiving, that was done initially to assist with the past and people, students, not not all students showing up the Monday after Thanksgiving. However, if you just think about the attendance data that Superintendent Jordan has shared this year, like we've been consistent in that same range. Every time she's given that attendance report, it hasn't necessarily um shifted. The other thing that um happened this last year, if you recall, we or this year, we extended the December holiday to include two additional days. And the hope was that those families that needed to travel would be able to travel during that timeframe because they essentially had three weekends um for that um that timeframe. But what we found is, at least this is what was reported from the school sites, is that families that needed to travel abroad at different times just traveled abroad at different times. So instead of going in December, they went in October or they went in November. So there were still, it didn't necessarily assist with um actual live-body attendance. As far as the end of the school year, uh you know, part of why um, you know, we end when we end is to assist um families with not leaving too early. So if you happen to, let's just say that the students had to report one day the following week, right? Just because if we push extra holidays in, then we push the end of school out for every day we take off, there is one more day added. So it is possible for the students to have the last day on Monday, depending on how many days are in that second or how many days are removed from that second semester of instruction. Alright, so our attempt to have a a half a week of uh instruction at the end of the school year also is to ensure that students remain in the high school for their finals and that at the uh elementary and middle school, they remain until the last day. Because chances are, school were just on a Monday or Tuesday of the following week, that parents, some, might take their um their students out for an early vacation. Right? Because we know that plane tickets and things like that tend to be cheaper.
And so we did sprinkle in, I mean, we did um put in days it with that consideration. Um like Damon said, the days after those long breaks as professional development days um and tried to maintain the same breaks that we have um have have had uh in the past. The uh week in February, the Thanksgiving break, the two weeks in at uh in December. And I think that speaks to um letting the teachers reset as well and still maintaining that um rigor during the year.
Thank you for that.
So just to piggyback on that, for one year, in the year twenty-five, twenty-six, it just worked itself out that we were able to put a professional development day, which was asked for in the second semester on the very first day that we returned from the winter break. So that then gives the teachers an opportunity to reset, have P D at the high school, potentially grade finals, and also allows the students to have one uh a day off before coming back to school on that Tuesday. We weren't able to do that for twenty-five calendar, but we were able to do that for the twenty-five, twenty-six.
Thank you. I have no other question, Board President.
Thank you. Um, how would staff observe a holiday that falls on a a P D or in-person day?
That is a little tricky um because, well, for certificated, for classified, they would put in, if they had to work, they could use uh vacation, they could use personal necessity, or certificated, they're not allowed to utilize those days per the contract. Um you know, that is a workday. Um so I'm not necessarily sure how they would be able to have it approved by H R.
Thank you for that, Damon. Um I I think uh obviously, in this process for this two-year calendar, uh I'm I don't believe that that that's something that that can be solved for this two-year, but I thi- I believe that we should look towards resolving that uh particular issue because we do have a lot of staff members that uh do take Lunar New Year or uh any other cultural holiday of of significance, easy. Thank you for that. Um with that said, uh do we have a motion to approve the both calendars?
Make a motion to approve both calendars.
Uh have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh motion and second, any other additional discussion? Hearing none? Uh all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Calendar is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, superintendent's office adopt resolution twenty twenty four dot twenty five, recognizing and honoring February as National African American History Month.
Thank you, President Ngo, and we have for this resolution, our learners from Weller Community and School who have provided the actual update on the resolution and also the recording. Mr. Forster, would you please share that?
Resolution twenty twenty four point twenty five, recognizing and honoring February as National African American History Month. Whereas the origin of National African American History Month or Black History Month began in nineteen fifteen when historian and author Carter G. Woodson founded the Association for the Study of African American Life and History and initiated the first African American History Week in February nineteen twenty six. And whereas the month of February celebrates the contributions that African Americans have made to American history and their struggles for freedom and equality and deepens our understanding of nation's history.
Whereas Black History Month is symbolized with the contributions of prominent African American figures such as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Malcolm X, W E B the Boy, Booker T. Washington, George Washington, Kevir, Harriet Tubman, Rosa Parks, Thurgood Marshall, Langston Hughes, Maya Angelou, Nelson Mandela, John Lewis, Condoleezza Rice, and Barack Obama.
Whereas Black History Month offers time to learn of profound impact of African Americans throughout history, including self-made millionaire Madame C. J. Walker, astronaut Macy Jemison, open heart surgeon Danielle Hill Williams, inventor Garrett Morgan, media mogul Robert Johnson and Oprah Winfrey, Winfrey, potential activist Stacey Abrams' culture. There is Ibram X. Kendi and professional athletes Jackie Robinson and Simone Biles.
Whereas our students of African ancestry have, have a history that has impacted global development and is much greater than what is typically learned in U.S. history. And whereas even after the Thirteenth Amendment abolishing slavery in eighteen sixty five and the Fourteenth Amendment granting citizenship and equal rights to African Americans in eighteen sixty eight, and African Americans continue to overcome racism and discrimination.
And whereas the formation of the National Association for the Advancement of Black People in nineteen oh nine, the Harlem Renaissance in the nineteen twenties, the Civil Rights Movement of the nineteen forties to nineteen sixties, Brown v. Board of Education in nineteen fifty four, Rosa Parks and the Montgomery Bus of Boycott in nineteen fifty five, the Little Rock Nine and the Civil Rights Act both in nineteen fifty seven, and the March on Washington in nineteen sixty three, the nineteen sixty five Voting Rights Act and the twenty thirteen to present Black Lives Matter movement led by Alicia Garza, Apol Tometi and Patrisse Cullors were all events among many others in U.S. history where African Americans played a central role. And whereas in nineteen six, nineteen fifty six, right here in Milpitas, California, Sunny Hills became the first planned racially integrated community in the United States. And
Whereas in nineteen seventy five, President Ford issued the first message on the observance of Black History Week, expanded by ASALH to Black History Month in nineteen seventy six, furthered by Congress passing a law in nineteen eighty six designating February as National Black History Month. And on February first, two thousand twenty four, the city of Milpitas hosted the Milpitas Black History Month Flag Raising Ceremony in collaboration with MUSD alumni, Nyla Chote, MUSD parent Colette Chote, MUSD senior board trustee Chris Norwood, MUSD educator Henry Robinson, Silicon Valley leaders Mila Ballinton, Sean Gardir, Sunny Hills DJ O'Henry, and organizations such as the Sunny Hills Neighborhood Association, Green Scholars, SVN double ACP, and African American Community Services Agency. And
Now therefore be it resolved that Milpitas Unified School District hereby proclaims the month of February as National African American History Month and encourages all educators, learners, and families to commemorate this occasion with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs. Passed and adopted by the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education at a meeting held on February thirteenth, twenty twenty four by the following vote.
Thank you so much, Scott. Do we have any public comments?
No public comment at this time.
Do we have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt the resolution to recognize and honor February as National American, African American History Month.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any additional discussion or comments? That said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Resolution recognizing an honor of February as National African American History Month is adopted. Next, we have the adopt resolution twenty twenty four dot twenty one, a school digital citizenship and anti-bullying resolution.
Thank you. I'm excited to bring this one back. This is one that was led by our student board reps, Savika, Ariana, and Janice. And initially, when they proposed the language, the board asked for staff to have input. And so I took it back to the superintendent's cabinet, which consists of our directors as well as our chief innovator and principal at Milpitas High School. And we identified areas that we had questions about or that needed additional information. And then Mr. Forstner and our teacher on special assignment, Karen Muska, they worked with our student board reps. And we now have this final version that we are presenting to the board tonight for its review and adoption. And before we start, are Savika or Ariana or Janice online?
I know they are not on.
Okay, go ahead.
Digital literacy is just another part of our educational process. And as a parent and as a family member and as a teacher, I want that to be a conversation that's better or improved between families doing their part, teachers doing their part, all of the community being involved as well. And I also feel like there has to be embedded curriculum as part of our avid school that would be involved in that with cool activities, not a boring lecture, not something that happens once a year or during a homeroom. It has to be really thought out and put in so that there are safety guide rails. Because AI is here to stay and technology is going to keep changing, it's going to keep growing, and it's going to be something we have to keep up with.
As according to Milpitas Unified School District High Schoolers, digital citizenship is acting online with the same respect you would to a person in real life. Understanding the impact of social media and being aware of your own online presence, the responsible use of social media platforms and technologies, and being civilized and caught on the internet. And
Whereas according to the National Institutes of Health, social media use can be associated with greater depressive symptoms and excessive reassurance seeking, but also with greater popularity and perceived social support.
Whereas one thousand nine hundred and sixty four, Milpitas Unified School District, nine to twelve graders were surveyed during the twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four academic school year. Twenty-five percent stated that they started using social media from ages five to ten. Fifty point nine percent started using social media from ages eleven to thirteen. While forty percent say they spend four to six hours each day on social media and fifty-two point nine percent wish they were educated more on the impacts of social media and digital presence before they started using it. And
Whereas school and district action should be taken frequently and throughout the year to educate students on how their online presence follows them throughout life and outlining practices to foster an environment free from harassment, bullying, and intimidation by building skills and appropriate behavior responses with respectful communication, digital citizenship, and conflict resolution. And
Whereas digital safety and internet security includes education on online scams, malware, exploitation, and in order to prevent substance abuse and combat its readily available access online, knowledge of the harm that alcohol, tobacco, vaping, and narcotics such as fentanyl can have on a learner's body and mind. And
Whereas the most effective approach to creating safe online environments free from cruelty and violence requires a comprehensive coordinated effort, including partnerships with outside organizations and strategies. Where all institutions, organizations, and individuals must accept responsibility for their critical roles in building community and collaborate to establish a positive learning environment.
Whereas MUSD should integrate digital citizenship, learning activities into curriculum and behavioral mental health and counseling resources be available throughout the year.
Whereas Milpitas Unified School District practices include digital citizenship weeks, facilitating discussions with parents, funding social emotional wellness programs, and setting an example of online presence through the safe use of technology in the classrooms.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Milpitas Unified School District will continue to work with a broad spectrum of local community, stakeholders, local law enforcement, behavioral and mental health professionals, parents, students, teachers, and classified support staff and school and district leaders to develop, implement, and monitor programs that foster and support budding digital citizens and online presence from free harassment and violence.
Be it further resolved that Milpitas Unified School District urges the city of Milpitas, county of Santa Clara, state of California, the federal government of the United States, and others to invest in, promote, and support comprehensive, coordinated, and collaborative strategies to educate on social media addiction, entertainment outside of social media, connecting with friends outside of social media, and maintaining a healthy and net beneficial online presence in our schools so that all students and staff have the opportunity to experience a stress-free, net-positive online environment supporting yet not hindering future career, academic, social, and emotional milestones. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Scott. Any public comments?
No public comment at this time.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Resolution is adopted. Thank you. Next is a select candidates on the CSBA delegate assembly ballot.
Thank you. So this is the board's opportunity to determine which of the candidates who are on the ballot for this term of delegate representation from Santa Clara Valley at the California State School Boards Association. The board needs to determine who it's collectively selecting.
Thank you, superintendent. Thank you, Scott, for pulling it up. We need to select four out of the five that are there. With that said, any initial comments from the names listed there from our fellow board members?
I'm familiar with each of the candidates. They're all good candidates in terms of being involved with their school districts. When I try to make a selection, I try to look for districts that represent different areas and districts that look similar to our own as well, so that they understand the things that we're going through as they represent as delegate assembly.
Thank you, trustee Norwood.
And my only comment is, given that there are, it's like two candidates from Los Altos, I, I would probably choose one.
Thank you, trustee Zhang. For clerk Naka, any thoughts?
I think, yeah, I would agree to select one from two of the candidates listed from Los Altos.
Thank you, board clerk Naka, vice president Yashon.
Yes, and I concur with the, with these two here.
Thank you. So it sounds like a majority. Well, we're gonna select at least the first three, Isabel Jubes, I can't pronounce the second part, Jody Mirhead, and Karen Porzanca. And what's left for us to decide is Vasali Shukay and Jessica Sbizer. Are we all in agreement?
Yeah, we, we need to decide one of the two candidates from Los Altos to finish up the four candidates.
Any particular comments about the two from Los Altos?
So I'm more familiar with Jessica than
Vasali.
Um, so I, I just don't know the person there.
Sure, sure. So we have one for Jessica. We'll go down, trustee Norwood.
Yeah, Jessica is a longstanding, she's the current Santa Clara County School Boards Association president. She's involved in delegate, she's involved in some other work, so she's deeply committed to the work in the region. And, and I would go with Jessica as well.
Okay, so we have two for Jessica, board clerk Naka.
I would go for Vasali Shukay.
Sure, okay. So we have two for Jessica, one for Vasali. Or vice president Yashon.
This is a tough one. I'm always a believer in giving someone a new try, so I'll go with Vasali.
Yeah, so we got two for Jessica and two for Vasali. Chris, how do you do this? When they put the buck in your court as a former board president?
You know, in, in listening to board member Naka and vice president Yashon, there, there is something to say about allowing new folks to develop, so I would switch to Vasali.
Vasali, okay. So with that said, I would also suggest Vasali as well, based on the points that were presented by our fellow board members here. So then, with that said, we will, as a district, vote for Isabel Jubes. Does someone help me with the pronunciation?
Yes, does.
Jody Mirhead, Carol Porzanca, and Vasali Shukay. Do we have a motion to, to vote for those four candidates?
Motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any, any other additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Thank you so much, fellow board members. Next item, item for approved cost savings budget reduction measure.
Thank you, President Ngo. Since last February, we have been engaging with stakeholders throughout the community and the district about budget priorities as we look for cost management. And in April of this past year, we received, along with our positive certification of our second interim, we received from the county superintendent a letter noting that we were continuing to do deficit spending that impacted the ending balance on our building reserve. And she cautioned us against doing that. And then this past fall in September, when we again received positive certification of our LCAP budget, she again provided that she was concerned that we are continuing to do deficit spending that impacts the budget reserve. And she requested that we create a plan. In addition to her concerns, our board has, as its, one of its primary responsibilities is fiduciary responsibility and has directed staff to provide a recommendation for cost management. And so throughout the fall, in meeting primarily with the association's roundtable and then getting input from our superintendent's cabinet and then from principals, we considered the, all of the positions in the district, including those that have been vacant for a while, and determined that including those that have been vacant for a while, and determined that we could achieve about two point one million dollars with the following suggested plan. And we looked at the health clerks that were added with COVID funds during, uh, the time that we needed additional support with testing students and, uh, staff for COVID. And so our recommendation is to, uh, pull back on that by, uh, reducing by three point seven five FTE health clerks. And so that would yield approximately two hundred and ninety thousand dollars in savings. Also, I received a letter again from the, uh, Navy this year in, um, when I came back from winter break. And the letter stated that because we are below the one hundred student enrollment threshold, that the military would not continue to fund our program. This time, however, they said that, given that we continue to try to increase our enrollment, that they would be amenable to allowing us to use their curriculum and allowing us to continue the program with their support. However, they would not fund an additional, um, they would not provide any additional funding. And so our recommendation is if the, um, NJROTC does not reach an enrollment scheduled for next year of at least a hundred, that we would reduce, um, by one FTE, which would save approximately one hundred thousand, because currently for two FTE, the cost is two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. And that, um, covers statutory benefits as well as health and welfare. And the military has only been providing sixty-seven thousand dollars. However, I was made aware today that the military, um, was only contributing towards half of an FTE, and they will provide us with funding of since hiring, um, our second person, uh, Mr. Whitney, that they will provide us with half of his actual salary cost. Since his hiring, which was in December, November, December. So that helps out for this year. However, again, if the enrollment is not at a hundred, at least, then they will only continue to, uh, they will not continue to provide any funding. Uh, the next, uh, recommendation is that we reduce our Educate Everywhere staff, which is currently three teachers by one FTE, given that our demand for this program, which is our online program, has decreased. And then we had the need for, uh, somebody at the Innovation Campus to be in the Welcome Hub. And as we were looking to reduce, uh, staffing, we had taken advantage of a vacancy and put a position there, and half of it will be funded by the building fund, so that it will not impact the general fund. And we also will not replace that half FTE in the Learning and Development, um, department. Then we have an unfilled MHS Staff Secretary position, which we will not fill, and that provides about eighty-seven thousand in savings. We also have a half-time payroll analyst position that's not filled. We won't fill that. That yields about eighty thousand dollars. Then in Learning and Development, we have five teachers on special assignment who are located at the district office, and then they go out to the school sites to provide support. And those positions are, are, um, induction specialist, our English Language Specialist, our Tech Specialist, our Student Engagement Specialist, and our Assessment Specialist. The Student Engagement Specialist and the Assessment Specialist are funded, uh, primarily by, uh, the Educator Effectiveness Grant. The, um, induction specialist is in part funded by Title II, which is funds from the federal government. To ensure we have, uh, staff that is highly qualified, and also it's, uh, that position provides first and second year teachers with the next, uh, level of work that they need in order to clear their credentials, and that's a great recruiting tool for us. And then we have our English learner TOSA, who is primarily all funded out of Title III. Again, that's federal funding to support English learners. And then our tech, uh, TOSA is seventy percent funded out of the general fund, and then, um, partially out of, uh, some of our other categorical funds. So as we continue to look at how we could restructure work there, we would recommend one to two FTE of TOSAs. And one to, one TOSA yields about a hundred and fifteen thousand in savings. Um, then we have one LND Administrator that we recommend, a position that we recommend to reduce. And we will do that by, uh, looking at how we restructure some of our mental health services, and that would yield about a hundred and sixty-four thousand in savings. And then in the last few months, we've had, uh, vacancy in our graphics, um, position, which is a halftime position. And that provides, uh, copying support and also support for, um, Mr. Forstner and I. And we will not fill that position. And then we have, um, elementary assistant principals, which across the board, people all said that maintaining them full-time is a top priority for the district because they offer safety and security. They also offer support with student engagement. And so, uh, in talking, um, Assistant Superintendent, uh, James and Executive Director Jahari met with every single principal, reviewed their budgets, and the principals all said that they would, um, there would be amenable to the district reallocating our funds, so that instead of, um, sending so much to the sites, we would maintain some of that funding here centrally, so that we could support the cost of full-time APs along with funding from the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program. And proportionally with the funding that we would use from that, we would need to have additional duties for the assistant principals that, um, would be serving the Expanded Learning Program. So altogether, that yields about two point one million dollars in savings. If we, uh, reduce by more than one TOSA, that could yield about two point two five million dollars in savings to the general fund. And again, it is the general fund that we're looking at, uh, to reduce, uh, struc- uh, deficit spending. So now I present this to the board for discussion and questions, because we need the board's, um, direction on, uh, this, uh, recommendation. And then for some of those positions, uh, by education code, we would need to notice the employees in those positions by March fifteenth. Um, and again, with board action on March thirteenth, that we, uh, plan to reduce our, um, staffing by eliminating those positions.
Thank you for the details, uh, superintendent Jordan. Uh, with that said, any public comments, Scott?
Uh, we have no public comment at this time. Oh. And we have a hand raised. Tom Bellori, uh, we're gonna enable your audio. Take yourself off mute, and you'll have two minutes to speak. Go right ahead, Tom.
I believe most of you know that I, uh, had a career in the military. I was, uh, in the military for twenty years, uh, a career which I'm proud of and has stood me in good stead. I don't know, I can't honestly say I know what the significance of that reduction in the, uh, NROTC budget implies. It almost would seem like, uh, you're, uh, effectively going to eliminate that program. And to not provide a path for students to, uh, realize a career in the military, I think is short-sighted. Uh, short-sighted on the part of the school district and potentially short-sighted on the part of the NROT, uh, the, the military that's supporting it. Uh, I don't know if there is a potential opportunity to, uh, approach one of the other services for support. But I think a pathway for a career in the military is important to maintain for the school district along with the other pathways that you, uh, support and advocate. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Got any other public comments?
We give him a second this time, and no hands raised. We're all, um, no more public comment at this time.
Any questions, fellow board members?
Um, actually, just one question. Out of curiosity, what is our current, uh, enrollment in NJ? That Matt, one hundred was sort of the, the magic cutoff, right?
Right. Um, I can look it up quickly and get that for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I believe, uh, superintendent Jordan, there's two, um, um, FTEs or NJR2s.
Correct. So we've had, uh, Sergeant, um, Margie for about the last six years and for the last, Margie Jackson, excuse me, Damon?
I pulled that data for you.
Oh, thank you. So, uh, Damon, uh, how long has Lieutenant Jackson been with us?
Since two thousand seventeen.
And what year did, um, Lieutenant Isel retire?
Two thousand eighteen.
Okay, so since twenty eighteen.
So since, sorry, since two thousand eleven, between, since two thousand eleven to two thousand eighteen, we had two staff members. There was a year and a half where we were only, we only had one staff member, and then we recently hired, um, a staff member in November of twenty three.
Okay, so from twenty eighteen until November twenty twenty-three, it's only been Lieutenant Jackson. And each year, uh, the military generally provides us with this letter letting us know that, uh, we're on probation, but this time it was different because they provided us also with a way that we could keep the program, even if we're not at the hundred, um, students that they require. And currently, Principal Wolman says we're at fifty-two students.
Thank you, superintendent Jordan.
I understand, um, you know, that we need to, uh, do a budget reduction. And, but however, um, I would like to pull NJROTC from that list. You know, it's, um, it's not fair to Lieutenant Jackson, who's been there like the last, I think, seven years or so, um, running this program by herself. Um, it is a pathway for our students. Um, you know, it's still, um, been in the, been at Milpitas High since nineteen seventy-four, and you know, with her being by herself, um, hasn't given her the chance to, um, recruit and run the program. And, um, Master Chief, um, Jimmy has just joined, but like, what, the last couple of months? Um, I just feel that we haven't had a chance for him to step in and help her. Um, you know, this, uh, program, it's, it's, uh, like, as a student, you know, came earlier, um, it's, it's helped them to, um, assist in discipline and build confidence in our students, strong with the community, and it's been part of, um, many events, including Veterans Day and several flag raising events. So, you know, for many other reasons, I like to pull the NJROTC from that list.
Thank you, vice president Yashon. Any other comments, board members?
A little bit more data. Uh, what is our trend in terms of, uh, students in, in, are we basically in that particular program? Are we seeing a slow increase? Or are we flat? Are we decreasing, let's say, over the last three to five years?
We're flat.
Probably, I'll probably add to that, we're probably flat, because since two thousand seventeen, Lieutenant Jackson hasn't had any, or two thousand eighteen, he hasn't had any support, and she's been, uh, trying to maintain, um, the program. Uh, it's been some community support, um, that is kind of reinvigorated, and then also board support as far as bringing them to the board and increasing their visibility in the community, so that the program could be revived and to attract, um, uh, the person that we attracted this year was also a part of that ongoing strategy. I did hear one of the young men talk about an eighth grade program as far as looking to develop a pipeline, uh, to, uh, reinvigorate the program. So those, those are the things that I heard on that particular issue.
And last question, um, is there other sources of funding besides the armed forces to support this program?
Uh, well, I received a letter from Supervisor Otto Lee today, and he said that he would support to the best of his ability, so I replied that, uh, if he could sway the military to provide additional funding, and then also if there's any other resources that he could help us with, that would, uh, go a long way. And this was just our exchange for today, so I will definitely be following up with them. And again, as I, uh, explained to, uh, both Lieutenant Jackson and Lieutenant, um, Whitney, uh, if they're, if they get it up to a hundred, then we don't have to go through with, uh, the final action at the end of the year with, um, reducing by one.
Right, but, but, I mean, to the end of the year, are they, I mean, they're, they would need to double their current enrollment, right? To get to, I mean, basically, they have until, I'm assuming, uh, until June to double their enrollment.
They would have until about May to double their enrollment, yes.
To, okay, to May, okay.
That is, um, um, to give them a chance.
I'm trying to understand, I'm not.
You know, discussing with, uh, with what's going on with that program, I know they have a, um, a plan to increase, because they already went over to, uh, Russell, and they were gonna go over to Rancho. Okay, to do the enrollment. I mean, they, you know, they have this, um, like, yeah, recruitment plan, um, not sure if it's like March or April. That's what I've heard so far, yeah. So I think that we, we need to give them a chance.
So, superintendent, what would be, um, right now, specifically for that role, we're talking about, I'll call a hundred thousand at this point? What would be the impact if we were to delay it by a particular time, let's say, a year or two years? What would be the financial impact to our budget?
So the financial impact to our budget for one year would, including statutory benefits, would be approximately, um, a hundred and twenty-five, hundred and thirty thousand.
You have to wrap in all the other.
Right, and then if you did two years, then you double that.
Yeah, okay, all right.
You mentioned that they are, um, giving the, the school a fifty, or they're paying a fifty or half, half of them the salary?
They're paying sixty-seven thousand dollars towards one salary, and I learned today that, um, they said that they would pay for probably about the same amount for the second FTE for this year. But, um, again, their letter states that if we don't get to a hundred, then next year they won't support it. They will, however, allow us to maintain the certification and the curriculum. I thought that, um, the community member of Bellory's, uh, suggestion that we check with other military as well to see what their parameters are, I think that, uh, is a route that we hadn't thought of.
Right, 'cause the, uh, it's my understanding the Army ROTC, uh, seems to be, uh, at least from people that I've talked to, seems to have a more, I, I don't know if they have the same plan, but it seems to be more generous for the Army. I don't know. I think it's, it's perhaps worth exploring if ROTC, um, is a pathway. And from my understanding, you know, we're um, is a pathway and from my understanding, you know, we're actually the only high school in the valley that offers R O T C program, so uh, having a pathway and if we are leaders in pathways, which I hope we are, um, it is worth exploring every possible opportunity that we can get to, to continue offering prep. Um, but on the other side, if the Navy says it has to be a hundred and we can't get there, they're gonna cut off support, that, that makes it tough. So what I would like to do is propose that we, uh, defer this particular action for the N J R O T C, uh, perhaps by a year to offer the um, instructors the opportunity to raise their enrollment as well as give us more time to explore, uh, other opportunities for funding. That's my proposal.
Thank you, um, uh, Scott, do we have a public comment?
Uh, yeah, we do have a hand raised. Do you want to go to now? Yeah, okay, uh, we have Brett Weber. We've enabled your audio, take yourself off mute, you have two minutes, go right ahead.
Good evening, School Board and the Executive Cabinet. Uh, as usual, I'm, I'm here watching from home. Um, I don't disagree with anything that has been said this evening about the N J R's, or R O T C program. I fully support the program personally and as a union leader. I just want to bring a lens of equity that you perhaps may want to view this from as our F T Es are calculated at the high school. If I can remind you that most teachers are teaching, most gen ed teachers are teaching thirty to thirty-five students per period, five periods a day, hundred and fifty students. That's per day, hundred and fifty per F T E. We're now talking about a program that has some fifty-two students for two F T Es. And all I want to say is while I fully appreciate the pathways, while I fully appreciate the opportunities that are given to my students who sit in my classroom wearing the J R, uh, J, uh, N J R T C uniform and all the lessons that they are taught. Remember the equity between our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Scott, any other public comments?
No other public comment at this time.
Thank you. Uh, cost management is never easy, never easy. Um, when we talk about, um, the F T Es, we're, we're talking about the staff and people in our district trying to educate our students. Um, and again, giving pathways, however, as board members, I have to implore you, we have to be, uh, uh, physically responsible, uh, and, and as we continue to go through the, the various negotiations and, and improving, uh, different, uh, increases in, in, in compensation. Uh, that has an impact on, on, our budget as a school district. Um, there, there isn't a lot of funding mechanisms, um, that we know of, um, that can increase and cover, um, these particular positions. Uh, we are ADA district, so, uh, one way is to increase attendance, uh, and enrollment in our district. No different from N J R T C as far as getting them to increase, um, their enrollment, uh, into the program, so. Um, with that said, again, uh, in consideration of what our fellow members, board members have talked about here, i- is there any additional comments or, or suggestions?
Can we bring up, um, the document, please? Which one of these positions, um, are, um, are currently affiliated with, um, grant funding or one-time funding?
Sorry, could you say that again?
Which one of these positions are affiliated with, um, grant funding or one-time funding?
The only one that would be affiliated with, um, grant funding or one-time funding would be if we were to reduce two TOSSAs rather than one. And then of course, using, uh, E L O P funds to fund about ten percent of each A P's position.
So there, say that one more time.
So, uh, the TOSSAs, uh, part of their funding is grant funding. So, um, one of them is seventy percent general fund, the other one is hundred percent grant funding, so then what we would do is with other positions that meet the requirements of that, uh, of that, uh, actual categorical funding, then we would redirect that funding to that position so that saves money from a general fund.
And, uh, I, I recall that we launched, um, uh, M U C Educate Everywhere due to COVID. Um, but is that also tied into independent study?
That is independent study, yes, and that's general fund.
So, so independent study is funded by the general fund and what is, what have we had historically in independent study, army staff?
Well, it depends on the demand, so generally we have about two. One for elementary and one for secondary. Currently, we have three there for secondary, but the numbers have, uh, decreased, so we'll eliminate one.
So going back to the, um, we, we've identified one L and D administrator, how many L and D administrators are there?
You have that. L and D as a whole, including, yes, L and D as a whole, the entire. So you have the general ed and then we also have the special ed. Now, the, um, the directors, coordinators, uh, executive directors, assistant soup's, um, program managers and supervisors.
And just while you're thinking about that, on, on a usually on an annual basis, at the end of the year, when we look at cost management, there are people that, uh, leave the district and there are some places, positions that we don't replace. Um, which is another way that we've had cost savings that isn't particular here. We also have potentially, uh, retirements that'll happen uh, that we may not replace, but those positions will get reallocated.
Uh, as far as I know, we don't have we don't have any administrative retirements coming up.
Sorry, one more time?
As far as I know, this year we don't have any administrator retirements coming.
So, uh, in, in hearing what, um, I heard from our, um, one of our union members in terms of the, the amount of work at the high school that each individual teacher has, um, it's a very compelling argument for the two F T Es. Um, with fifty students versus what everyone else is doing, but it's also extremely compelling in terms of uh, what the N J R O T C, um, its re-emergence as, is coming and it's apparent. Maybe I'm just blind, but there's, there's good energy in terms of the program that's moving, so I do think that there are other, um, that these suggested budget reduction possibilities are, um, are, are realistic. But the board, uh, several of the board members, including myself, uh, have an interest in, um, seeing seeing if the N J R O T C put program could continue, um, at the, till the end of this year. Um, or to see if they can reach their numbers, which will also give board members the opportunity to see if they can also lo- locate additional resources, uh, to make that position happen. Uh, moving forward in terms of looking at, there's a veterans commission, there are a number of things that possibly could happen uh, in terms of retaining that position, recognizing that we want to do set the equity standard at the high school of having a minimum number of students. Um, I, I don't know what Lieutenant Jackson's future is, but I know that she's been committed to the district and she is also potentially looking for the future and a transition, so if we eliminated, uh, her pipeline as far as the person that is supporting her now, we also eliminate possibly the ability for her, if she decided to retire, we don't have a placement and then we're basically eliminating the program. So I, I don't know if, if that was part of their planning, or I don't know who was a, a part of that conversation. And also, um, want to be mindful of the culture of the high school, um, because if, if it's a program that the board, um, is is adamant about wanting to see there, but the culture of the high school is saying, well, we're not really, we're not really on the same energy, we got to figure out how to make a, um, how to bridge that conversation, because there is something about that strengthens the culture and the climate of not only the high school, but the district and the board and the city with our N J R O T C program, which is far beyond the value of that we look here as simple financial impact.
Yep, so just some clarification. Um, the way that the ed code presents itself unlike in business, when we're talking about reductions in staffing, it doesn't happen right away, it happens at the end of the school year. But we have to notice people by March fifteenth. Um, secondly, your, the response to your question about the number of administrators and L and D is eleven. And yes, I agree, there are other avenues that we could explore particularly around military and because this is a pathway that benefits the community. And, uh, as you pointed out, it's rallied a lot of spirit around how can we increase their enrollment? Because bottom line is if unless we find another military branch that doesn't have the same requirements as Navy, if we don't have a hundred kids, they're not going to support it financially. They will allow us to maintain it at fifty kids and still call it N J R O T C and use their curriculum. So I think that in addition to increasing their enrollment, looking for other avenues of funding, I think we also need to explore other military branches to see what their requirements are.
Thank you. Someone have something to?
Damon?
I just wanted to share so that you had the full picture, uh, the freshman recruitment for this year. So there are some competing interests, so while I hear you in terms of, um, wanting to recommend um, improved recruitment for the N J R O T C program, we have two potential, um, programs that are coming on board that also will be taking freshmen. Or actually three, the Middle College, um, is, okay, middle the middle, the middle college is tenth grade, Calaveras Hills potentially taking on freshmen as well as the Innovation Campus, so those entities are, could potentially be, um, trying to recruit the same students, that's all.
So you're saying that we could have N J R O T C at Cal Hills?
No, I'm saying they would have to choose one or the other.
So, uh, um, I'm, I'm interested in more discussion around the, the one or the other when we have secondary students and understanding the requirements of N J R O T C. Uh, with also the Innovation Campus, uh, coming live as well. We understand that there are competing interests. You're saying the N J R O T C is only a program at the high school that does seven, the, the number of periods for the full school day.
At this time.
And that, and that students at the, um, Middle College High School or, um, because it's only one period, correct? They're not there all day.
For the middle college?
Right, they're not, the N J R O T C is one class, right?
Various periods.
Right. So, um, so there isn't a possibility of a period that may be open at the high school for N J R O T C to be utilized at Calaveras Hills or the Innovation Campus at this point?
Correct.
It is, uh, something we could explore though, it's an interesting idea.
I, I, I will, uh, one more public comment, Scott, uh, after that, um, the period for public comment has, has closed, the, the, the opportunity is now for public comment.
Okay, President, now we have Bill Chuan with his hand raised, Bill, we're gonna enable your audio, take yourself off mute, you have two minutes, go right ahead.
Uh, thank you, uh, I, uh, been in contact with, um, our supervisor Otto Lee and he let me know that there was, uh, he was not able to be here, but he let me know there was a letter. Um, and he wrote, as you discussed the district's proposal, cost management, plus I urge you to preserve the Navy N J R O T C program at Milpitas High School. I have been extremely impressed with the development and caliber of students who participate in your N J R O T C program. N J R O T C students learn leadership skills, gain self-confidence and practice problem solving on a daily basis. This program has produced some of the most mature, disciplined and respectful young adults I have ever met. Students learn the value of giving back to their local communities through service and are more likely to stay engaged in their community after graduation. While most students do not pursue a military career after the program, their experience gained through the program helps students stay focused on their education and the track for graduation. Milpitas N J R O T C program has had a strong history of service to Milpitas and the South Bay community for forty years. These cadets have volunteered at many community events, including the County Day on the Bay event for the past three years and are a huge reason why the event is so successful. Additionally, this current senior instructor, a retired Master Petty Chief, is a necessity because this program requires two senior instructors. Ri- reducing funding for even one position will effectively end the only N J R O T C program in the South Bay. In twenty twenty-one, Silver Creek High School lost their second instructor and the entire program ended because of the need to have two instructors to sustain the program. It would be a travesty to see this program eliminated. Coincidentally, the senior instructor's son is enrolled in the U C Berkeley Navy N J R T C program and can eat, in, uh, provide invaluable insight to uh, for students to apply for scholarships. Please preserve the Milpitas N J R T C funding and I will commit to do my utmost to provide whatever assistance necessary to ensure its continued success. Please do not hesitate to contact the office of the supervisor in this important endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Last call for public comments on this particular topic.
We have no other hand raised at this time.
Period for public comment on this particular item is closed. Thank you so much, uh, board member, uh, Board Clerk Nakka, any, any additional comments or questions from? Can we put the thing back up on the screen after the public comment so we can continue? Thank you. Board Clerk Nakka, any comments or thoughts?
I definitely echo with, um, my colleagues here, the board members, because we definitely need to extend the program to see what the potential interest is as far as Calaveras Hills is concerned or the Middle College High and also explore different avenues for the funding for which we definitely need uh, a certain stipulated amount of time, so this def, uh, must be my understanding, hold up.
Thank you, uh, Board Clerk Nakka. Uh, board members, I really truly appreciate your passion, um, as we continue to build uh, capacity in this district for all avenues of pathways. Um, what I'm hearing and, and there, there is various degrees of suggestions here, if we can get, get in unison as far as whether we delay um, the particular, uh, F T E or we remove the particular F T E, those were the two that I heard uh, as far as this two suggestions.
Board President, um, in, in addition to the N J R O T C, I'm, I'm still looking at the, the the budget reduction possibilities and cost management with the in- input that the superintendent has provided in terms of the L and D TOSA one to two in terms of all that is funded with the, um, some one-time funds and some general fund, the L and D uh, administrators, we have eleven, uh, uh, of those. Um, I appreciate the fact that we're not replacing any positions, we, we don't necessarily have all the information about uh, what the future planning are, but we have to make a decision before this board meeting so that they can, uh, put out notices, um, prior. That, is that correct?
That is correct, th- this is the last opportunity for us to, to make any notice for this particular, uh, s- uh, school year. That is correct. This is the last opportunity for us to, to make any notice for this particular uh, uh, school year. Otherwise, all, all this will carry on uh to the next school year. Because we have to, we don't have another board meeting before the fifteenth, March fifteenth.
We have, we have a board meeting on March thirteenth and that's the meeting where um interim assistant soup of HR, uh James will provide the layoff notices for the board to take action and then he and his team will deliver them uh in person to those that are affected.
Thank you for the clarification.
So, um, Tuesday, March twelfth.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so we, we do have another board meeting before then, but I wouldn't give the, the staff the opportunity to um put together the notices in time with, with the action. Without direction today.
One other clarification, if I heard correctly, on, so it's my understanding that if the ROTC program hits one hundred, it actually reduces our cost, is that correct?
Yes.
So, so the key thing for that particular program to, to really survive is to hit their number?
Yes.
Because then it won't be, and it'll be less of an impact on us.
Yes.
As well as we're able to preserve that pathway.
Yep.
So I will stand by my original suggestion of, let's give it time, let's delay it at least a year because we'll find out, because if they can't hit a hundred, the Navy pulls out too. Not only us. Well, right?
Well, the Navy did say if they don't hit a hundred because uh the Navy knows that we're trying, that they would uh support us and by allowing us to use the curriculum and being certified as NJROTC at fifty kids.
And from the Otto Lee's letter, he is going to look into his resources and support the NJROTC.
Yeah, I, I stand by my original uh suggestion that we delay it a year.
Well, I, I would ask the board um within, including our passion for NJROTC, to be able to look at some of these other items as well, because um and not to remove them, but to look at the, the way that they're funded. So for example, the health clerks, three point seven five FTE, COVID-funded um. Are, that's one-time funds, is that correct?
Yep.
So that means that in this cost reduction, our ability to support some of our school sites with the health clerks, that will go away. And there aren't any other sources of funding that are currently going to be coming online to replace those, knowing that we have chronic absenteeism and that's health-related, so there aren't any new funding sources for our health clerks.
Correct. So we would go back to our model that we had prior to COVID, which is a part-time health clerk at every school, except for Milpitas High School where they have two.
And for our independent study, we had one person for elementary and we had one person for uh secondary and our average daily attendance or our enrollment at that time in the school district was approximately what? Nine thousand, ten thousand?
Um, it, it doesn't have to do so much as the enrollment of the district as the enrollment of kids in those programs and the students who are requesting independent study as their um platform for learning has decreased.
So education, so Educate Everywhere could be reimagined and we petitionally um can gain greater savings there based on the decline in enrollment that we're having currently, or are we saying that um Educate Everywhere from the general fund is what we're funding at a minimum with two people for elementary and secondary?
I'm not exactly sure I'm following what your question is, so let me just explain it. Um, we staff, we've staffed it generously, so rather than staffing it generously, staff it based on the historical demand, which is two FTE.
Based on, or historical demand based on overall district enrollment, right? Because the, the, the demand is based on what we're providing services for at each of the grade levels or each of the elementary versus secondary. So if we had um let's say we had nine thousand students, um and that was the demand, one elementary and one secondary. Now we have more students in the district, so there may be a greater demand. So we're making the decision to cut one of the FTEs or the Educate Everywhere um based on the request of the budget reductions overall.
Right. And our uh enrollment went up by two hundred students this year. So our enrollment right now at ten thousand two hundred is more than it's been uh since COVID. And we had the spike in the height of COVID where we gained about two hundred students, but then going back the year prior to that, it was around ten thousand two hundred. So we're at about the same level as we were prior to COVID.
Right, because we were basing our budget reductions on the fact that we were, our, our enrollment was going down um as well as um our attendance numbers were below what we desired. And that's where we came up with the two point one million and we came up with that, was that two years ago?
No, that was actually what we need right now. As you look at with the budget that the governor has proposed with the point seven six COLA with our um ADA still not quite at ninety, well, still not at ninety-seven percent. Just below ninety-six percent. So we actually at the beginning of the year, we're aiming towards ninety-seven percent and expecting a COLA of around three point two six. So those two factors uh lead us to still needing to reduce by a little over two million.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I have no other questions, Board President.
Thank you, Trustee Norwood. Yeah, the comments, board members. So with that said, is there a, a particular motion?
So I'll make the motion to approve um the budget reduction uh possibilities with the removal of the NJROTC um and the request to investigate um the um the, the current design of the Educate Everywhere program and look at um the total number of LND administrators in support of the budget reductions.
I second the motion.
We have motion and second and additional discussion.
Clarification on your motion, uh you're removing it only for this year or going forward? So this is, I'm assuming this is only for this year, is that correct?
So i- i- this is a, a, a budget reduction for this particular school, which is the request to remove?
Let me clarify, it's for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Thank you.
Right, okay, that's, that's what I wanted to, okay.
Removal of the plan for next year does not mean that it's uh future protected.
Right, 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 right. That's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any other discussion points? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? The amended cost saving uh reduction measure plan uh is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I, I understand it's, it's not easy, uh but as we continue to work together and, and find pathways uh to solutions, I appreciate everyone's input. Moving on to the, the next item, dissent items. Dissent items are considered routine and will be acted upon by the board in one motion. There's no discussion on these items prior to the motion unless members of the board, staff, or public request that specific items be tabled or removed for discussion or correction. Scott, are there any public comments in regards to consent item?
Oh, we have no public comment at this time.
Thank you, Scott. Any uh consent items to be pulled? Board members, board executive cabinet? Hearing none? Do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
Motion to approve consent items.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and second and additional discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, consent items are approved. Item twenty, dates of future board meeting, February twenty-seventh, the board superintendent retreat, tentative open session from eight thirty AM to four thirty PM at the uh MUSD Innovation Campus in Conference Room Eight, uh two-ten. March twelfth, tentative study session, um, March twelfth, tentative study session, uh five PM, tentative closed session, six PM, open session seven PM, hybrid on Zoom, YouTube, at the Randall War Language School. Excuse me. Item twenty-one, announcements and reminders, any announcements and reminders from board members? Any from executive cabinet?
Yes, this uh coming Monday and Tuesday are president's holidays and then Wednesday through Friday, schools are closed for February break.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan.
And for those who didn't have enough crab, the Milpitas Chamber of Commerce, um the Milpitas Chamber of Commerce, we're still having our uh crab feed on March the fifteenth. So hopefully you'll get your tickets and maybe a chance to do your crab dance.
Any other announcements? Thank you so much. Um, do you have a motion to uh close the, the, the meeting?
This motion.
Adjourn the meeting. Uh, motion to adjourn the meeting, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?